So hello, everyone. We're going to get started this evening. Thanks to everyone for joining us tonight. I am super glad that we're virtual this evening and not out on the roads in this. And thank goodness, we've got that opportunity to make that kind of change. And so we'll call the meeting to order for our committee of all meeting February 14. And we'll begin by just checking in on items added to the agenda. We did have one circulated by Yvonne. That was, I think, an oversight between her and I. Because I think Jason had forwarded that grant application through. So so efficiently that it got missed in the in the last minute shuffle to get things added to the agenda on Thursday and Friday. So that's a grant application from the River Bushwell Mariners Society. Could I get a sense from councilors if they would consent to adding that to the agenda?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we have unanimous consent to add that item to the agenda. Thank you, everyone. Are there any other items to be added? Okay, so hearing that, I have a motion to approve the agenda as an.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Council Sampson. Could I have a second, please?
A second, let's.
Thanks, Council Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda was the review of the minutes. They were circulated in advance at the meeting. Were there any errors or omissions noted on those minutes? Okay, so there are none. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please? So moved. Deputy Warden, could I have a second, please?
Right, second, let's.
Thanks, Council Brett Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, we've got a couple of guests with us this evening, so I'm pretty excited about that. And thanks to those who are lined up to do presentations. We have quite an agenda ahead of us this evening, and it's a really stormy night. So I am going to just really stick to the timing. So we'd like to try to get each presentation wrapped up within 15 to 20 minutes each, okay? So so if you see me with the, you know, with the warning sign, please forgive me, but we do have a lot on the go. So we'll begin by welcoming folks from the Dr. Kingston Memorial Community Health Center. Board Chair Juanita Mumbercat is with us tonight, as well as Michelle McPhee and Dorothy Bernard, I think. I can't see everyone on my screen right now all at the same time, but you folks are here to provide us with an update. And yeah, that's really great. We'd love to hear from you. So the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Warden Amanda, am I to share my presentation, or would it be shared for me?
I think Yvonne would just need to make you a co-host to allow you to share.
Okay. I just made Michelle and Dorothy both co-host.
Okay, but I think Juanita has the presentation.
Is that who was just talking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, Juanita, I'm gonna make you the co-host.
No problem.
I just said I'd find you in the list.
Still beats driving on these roads.
Yeah. I'm glad that Zoom is an option. It's great.
Yes, me too.
There you go. You should see something on your screen.
Okay, let's see if I can share. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So thank you for the opportunity of speaking to you this evening. I've got Michelle McPhee and Dorothy Barnard and Sherry Sampson here as well. Michelle is going to help me out with some of the information, and Sherry and Dorothy always have lots of info. If we, if they can add to what I'm going to say, then I am happy to have any of them join in. So I will definitely stick it, stick to under the 15 minutes. But what we wanted to come back to council for was to talk about our funding crisis again. As you know, we were here, I don't know, a year and a half ago. And and we're back kind of in the same situation. So we wanted to come back to council and give you a little update on what we have been doing and where we are. And and just chat with you about what we can do. So some of the things we're going to look at is some of the history of Dr. Kingston. I'm not sure if we've ever mentioned that to you folks before. The value of the center to the Cape Breton South, straight Richmond area. Sorry, my internet is a little wobbly this evening, so I'm gonna, if I pause, it's, I'm waiting for it to catch up to me. Some of the challenges that we're experiencing and how they affect health and and care for health in our area and what we're doing towards long-term solutions. So brief history, if if you didn't practice, and it was really important to the community. And in 1983, they opened a community-supported clinic. And that was in the old convent from the church that was there, fairly large building. So it, you know, he was around for a long time helping out and and the community worked with him very much. 1985, unfortunately, he died suddenly. But his legacy lived on in the community. And in 2013, they, the community came together again to build that present beautiful building that we have over in in the Lordwood's area. So the the Dr. Kingston Memorial really is a tribute to the man that saw the need for better healthcare in rural communities. And so it's kind of a something that the health center is pretty proud of, that that the community banded together. I'm going to let Michelle talk to the next two slides. So she'll talk about the social inclusion and and the senior safety. I'll hand her over to Michelle. And Michelle, just let me know when you want to want me to move my slides.
Perfect, thanks, Juanita. I'm just gonna bring up my notes as well. And so I do know everyone around the council table, but for the sake of everyone else on the call, my social inclusion coordinator, quite a handle. So while this program is administered by the Kingston Health Center, it is Richmond County-wide. And it's available free of charge to Richmond County residents 55 and above. Important to note that that does constitute almost half of Richmond County's population. And I essentially act as a resource and a service for seniors to increase their safety. We work on issues around social inclusion and overall well-being. So how do I do that? I know that we spoke, I had the opportunity to present to council last year, so we really went into the program in depth there. And I hope to just be really concise, keep it within our timeframe now, and speak to more of what's changed with COVID. So prior to COVID, I did a lot of service navigation, but also really big bulk of community outreach work. So programming, presentations, I organized a lot of opportunities for people to come together. So I think the slide you're looking at right now is a kitchen conversation, kitchen talk that we hosted. It was an opportunity for people from across Richmond County to get together intergenerationally, share resources, create some social connections, do some asset mapping, talk about some of the gap that we might have in our area and how we could try to help fill the void. And the next slide, Juanita, I think is one of my favorite examples of programming. It's the intergenerational yoga program. It was residents from the villa and pre-primary students from next room was able to participate in that. It was really, really fabulous, and I do look forward to being able to get that off the program. And people often self-refer, but I I also get referrals from service providers, counselors, sometimes the general public, et cetera. And what I find with service navigation is that I am the consequences of poverty, really and truly. Food security is huge right now. Everybody's noticed the hyperinflated cost of groceries. And I think Juanita and Dorothy will speak to River Roots and the importance of sustainable food systems, et cetera, as we move forward. But for people who are on fixed incomes right now, they're making really difficult decisions when they go to the grocery store. And that's to do housing repair and maintenance. So again, the cost of materials has risen, but I don't know that the grants have kept pace with that inflation. So we're seeing some issues there. Isolation isolation and loneliness has been really prevalent during COVID. I think we've all experienced to some degree what that looks like, what it feels like. And let me see, I sorry, I just lost my spot here. And I also do a lot of paperwork, so filling out grants, so heating assistance rebates, efficiency Nova Scotia, housing rebates, seniors care grants, things like that. So that's important. And, you know, sometimes those needs can be addressed through service navigation. And then sometimes you have to be creative and think outside of the box. And one thing that's happened, I think, over the past two years is that I've been able to better advocate for issues when the resources aren't sufficient. And I do that essentially by raising the profile of issues of importance to Richmond County seniors by being directly involved with groups, working groups that are moving work forward. So really quickly, over the past two years, I'm kind of by Warden Mumbercat here. I'm on the Provincial Advisory for Mental Health and Addictions. I think everybody's mental health has ended, well, you know, we're seeing the fallout of that currently. I'm on the Seniors Take Action Coalition. It's an amazing group of seniors from across Richmond. They advocate on issues of importance to seniors. I also sit on the Municipal Recreation Advisory. We know how important recreation programs are for physical activity, but also that social activity. And I think we have a presentation later from the Save the Gym possibly group. And we know that access piece is huge and that it also combines and is interrelated with our mental health. So that's really important. Community Health Board, I'm also on the Community Health Board. And some of those I sit on in a volunteer capacity, but because they're so interwoven with the work that I do in community, I think it's important to mention them. So, okay, seeing the time. I think overall, the program, it's really broad, and that's a strength, and it's able to know its community. And I think it's a tremendous resource for Richmond County seniors. And as always, I'm, you know, you're most welcome to continue sending referrals against to seniors in the community and happy to answer any questions at the end. Over to you, Juanita.
Thank you, Michelle, for both the presentation and everything you do. Wonderful. Okay, so Michelle gave a really good overview of all the various projects that she coordinates or does herself and a lot of the groups that she is, that she participates in. So here, I'll just take you through a few more slides describing some of the work that goes on because the health center is there. So there's a, the Housing Matters, straight Richmond for safe housing, for accessibility, affordable housing, for planned communities. We're, we're, we're participating in that. The River Roots, Richmond River Roots Market Gardens. So I'm just gonna stop sharing for a moment, but because I have some notes on a different screen, one moment. So that garden, the kind of the overarching goal would be to be a broad-reaching food security endeavor with lots of different approaches included in that endeavor. Community food security is one where by by trying to define what that means would be the diet through a sustainable food system that maximizes healthy choices, community self-reliance, and equitable access for everyone. So it's a, it's a lofty goal, but one that's really, really important to everybody in in our area. They work towards that by building on current partnerships and collaborations. So it's a countywide approach, where I, that has an impressive increase in knowledge by teaching them things like harvesting, preparing, storing, preserving, and cooking. We want to improve access to fresh produce and have some intergenerational endeavors to encourage lots of people to enjoy fresh food. Let me share my screen again. Okay, and then some of the other organizations that we are involved with. We've got the Literacy Network, Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health, Nova Scotia Health, we work with them a lot. The Straight Richmond Housing, the Seniors Take Action Coalition, and Community Health Board. So just examples of the network that that we participate in and share. Share resources and thoughts and ideas. So our building, as we said, it was built fairly recently, and it's a beautiful building. It, for the people who work out of this building, for physicians or nurse practitioners or other healthcare professionals, it's a turnkey solution. So a new physician or physician coming to the area doesn't have to set up anything. They walk in the door and they can start practicing. And they have, you know, nice, quality, spacious, clean, beautiful environment. It is a collaborative practice, so we are, we are, FTE is two physicians, a nurse practitioner, a family practice nurse. And then we also have other people that come in like a dietitian, or we have foot care that we offer there. Social workers come in. So we've got various people who come in who the, the healthcare professionals, the primary healthcare professionals can help, can utilize these other services to either get the support they need through the other services, or they can prescribe, prescribe non-traditional primary healthcare. So, you know, like, they're, I think they're starting to go get into more working with other ideas, not just the primary healthcare. So it's a really, it's almost evolving how, how the team that comes out of that building works, and it's pretty interesting. So we have our, the primary healthcare professionals, but we also have, we, we give them medical receptionist staff plus Sherry, who does the, manages the overall building, plus all the staff. And then we have the grant-based programming that brings a lot of extra stuff. So that's kind of our, who we are. So again, we are back to our financial challenges. So as we told you last year, or a year and a half ago, however long it was, at that time, we were operating with only one physician, and we were eating into our, our maintenance budget, our, our, save it for a rainy day budget. And since then, we did get a physician, which was great. We, we operated for a bunch of months with, you know, in a much better financial situation. However, as you all know, our, our second physician, our first physician has now left to pursue other other things in life. So we are back down to one physician, which means we're back to every month, pretty much, we're running a deficit and we're eating into our maintenance reserve fund, and we don't have a big maintenance reserve fund. So it's, it's a little distressing. As well, of course, COVID has impacted our ability to retain people, recruit them to our location, and that's across the board, I think. And in 2021, our rental income only covered 63% of our operating costs. So it's kind of where we are. We wanted to let you know what some of the things that we've done or are considering doing. We have been working very hard to reduce our annual deficit. And we were doing really well. We had hit a couple of months where we were like red, and not red, black. And it was very exciting, and we had, we had hopes for continuing in that manner. But then we had the physician recruitment challenges, so that's kind of thrown us away. But we had been making excellent progress. We've installed solar panels and we've done the LED lighting refit. We are considering increasing rent, but that's a tricky conversation. We are always looking for other healthcare providers or or professions that are complementary to healthcare, that might rent our space. We are actively working with Nova Scotia Health and Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health to help recruit a physician area. We are, we've had a bunch of meetings with NSH this year to explore what we might be able to do. So we're, we're looking at many different ways of trying to solve this problem. So one of the ways that we're trying to solve this problem is to ask Richmond County for emergency funding. And what we're looking for is funding to cover our deficit. We don't want it forever. We just want it in the months where we can't cover our operating costs because of this. Because we don't have a physician, a second physician, and we would like to have your support, you know, until we find a permanent solution. Because month to month, it's, it's pretty, it's a crisis that we're, we're, we are working very hard to solve. But we're looking for, for your help. And that's it for the presentation. Questions?
Councilors have questions for Juanita or anyone on her team? Well, maybe I'll just get the ball rolling with one or two then, because I, I am kind of wondering, Juanita, where are the talks? Where have the talks landed with provincial government or any kind of federal communication on this? Is there, are you making similar requests for support?
Yeah, so we had, we have, we've been having a series of meetings with Nova Scotia Health. And so we had like a meeting, I think, before Christmas, and then there was one just in the early January and some follow-up emails, and we've recently sent them a description of of our situation and what we might, what we might get from them. And we've, like, I sent, the, the way we started this process off was that I sent the premier and the Minister of Health, the CEO of Nova Scotia Health, I, you know, I, I went to as top as I could and sent them a please-help-us email. And it, it, you know, we, it got some traction, it got some attention. So we had a meeting with the CEO and of Nova Scotia Health and a vice president from the Department of Health and Wellness. And then those are the people that we had sort of the follow-on meetings with and, and who we are sending more information regarding our situation to. So and I think the most recent action was us sending them some information. And I believe we sent that email back to them last week as well. I have an email from one of, one of our, I, one of our questions that we asked during those meetings, those series of meetings was, you know, while we're looking for a physician, it would be nice if we could, if we can attract locums to be able to attract them until we get a physician. But as we understand it at the moment, you can only get, I forget how many days, it's like weeks, like three or four or six, I don't know how many, but a very limited period of time to cover vacation for a physician, but not, not indefinite period until we replace a physician. So we brought that up as a, could you change your locum rules so we can get support until we get a physician, if we can even find locum physicians who want to come to our area? So I've received an email just late last week from someone who, from the, I forget if she's from DHW or NSH, who is responsible for locum processes. So I have to give her a call and, and see where we go from there. So that's kind of, so that's an ongoing process, trying to find both. Like, what we asked them was for a, give us a solution, a short-term solution, but give us a long-term solution. So we've asked for both from, from the Nova Scotia government, and we have reached out to the federal government, and we haven't found a, a way to get funding from the federal government yet. But Mike Callaway and his staff have, we've, we've talked to them a bunch of times. And they are also looking for opportunities for funding from their, from the federal side. So that's kind of where we are with that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sampson, did you have a question?
Myself?
Yes, I just noticed you were unmuted.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was, I was just looking at some sort of timeframe, Juanita, where you were looking for some emergency funding?
Well, I wish I knew, starting anytime now. And hopefully, we'll get a physician or a long-term solution. But, you know, every month, we, not every month, but unless we're getting a big HST rebate or something, we are basically running a deficit. So the months that we run deficits is kind of what we're looking for. But hopefully, we, through our, all those other methods, get a long-term solution. But this is emergency.
Okay, and, you know, and I, you know, as many folks will recall, the last time this happened, I think we, we did provide for, I think, one month of leave to help with your efforts. It was coming in at the end of the fiscal year, as I recall. You know, it's certainly not typical of municipal council to provide any kind of operational funding period to any organization. It's, you know, we have grant programs to fund specific projects, but I think at the same time, recognizing that a critical piece of our medical infrastructure and health infrastructure is at risk in the county. It's, it's really concerning, and I, you know, I think we all share your distress. But I think, I'm not sure that we would have enough information today to make a decision on that. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering, is there additional information you could provide, Juanita? Thinking financial, you know, some financial records. If, I don't know, it's probably too soon that you might, may not have your year-end done to the end of, you know, last year. But aside from financial records, like specific amount per month that you're looking at, just, I guess, some additional information to help us determine with you what, what exactly, what the shape of this emergency is right now.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. I can, Sherry's on the call, so we could, we, we can figure out what information might be useful to you. And yeah, absolutely, we can share.
Okay. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, Sherry's just called, so go ahead.
Well, it's okay, Counselor Sampson, I do see, I do see Sherry Sampson's messages in the chat, 30 days per physician. I can provide any information. Thank you, Sherry. So Deputy Warden?
So I would just say, like I did last year at this time, when we chatted, you know, providing that information. I think connecting with our CFO is the best, is the best option to see, you know, to, to provide him with the information that he needs to, to have, to make some type of determination in terms of reasonable.
Yeah, that, that's probably. Yeah, that that's probably a good idea, um is maybe ask. Uh Wanita for, you know, you and Sherry and your team to work with our CFO Jason to kind of assemble some additional financial information and then. You know, he can kind of then brief counsel and can make a determination from there. That sound doable?
Sure, yeah, yeah, for sure. Sherry, is that good with you too?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't have any problems with that. I can reach out to Jason myself if you'd like.
Yeah, sure.
If the timeframe allows, could we uh re-engage in this conversation, maybe at our our regular council meeting in two weeks' time? Just, you know, whereas um if if they, they're in contact with the CFO, we can find out a little bit more information, then we don't let this drag on too long.
Yeah, I agree.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, so.
Sorry, you'd want us to come back for that discussion on two weeks from now?
Or at least to have uh some kind of, you know, information package uh to our, you know, that you're developing with the CFO. To bring to council so that we've got some information to review. I don't know, I don't think we need another presentation. Um but definitely that information would be good, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so procedurally done, um I'm not sure that we need a motion to that effect. We're just, we're asking um. The the group from Kingston to uh to work with the CFO. Do you do you need a motion put forward to instruct staff to work with them?
That's not necessary. Oh, well, maybe it should be, depending on what you want from staff. Is there, is there going to be a request from staff? Or just to evaluate the information perhaps and provide some detail on that for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking, just to.
That might be the, might be the uh the way to go.
Yeah, okay.
Provides with some instruction uh to uh evaluate the relevant financial information in time for the council meeting.
Yeah, okay, so could I get him?
I said if it's possible.
Okay, so could I uh look for a motion from counselors then to uh. Instruct staff to work with the Kingston Health Center team to assemble financial information. And provide that uh provider of briefing, I guess, on it in time for our February twenty eighth counseling.
I'll make a motion of that effect.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Brent Sampson. Can I have a second or Counselor Sean Sampson? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, thanks again, Wanita and Michelle and everybody who has joined us from Kingston Health Center this evening. I really appreciate it. And I just realized I forgot to kick off our February fourteenth meeting with a happy Valentine's Day. I hope everybody's having as much fun on Valentine's Day as I am in a council meeting. Sorry if we uh if we've cramped your plans, so. So next on our agenda uh is the Village Fitness Center Co-op Limited. Uh so we've got Claire Rankin, Marvin McLean. And Jessica Gibson here with us this evening um as well. I see some other folks in the room that I think probably have a strong interest in this, so. So over to you, Claire, Marvin and Jessica uh to provide your presentation.
Great, thanks, uh thanks for having us, everybody, and uh I have a bottle of wine on the floor here for Valentine's Day. And I guess I'm showing my age by uh not having a PowerPoint presentation here tonight for you guys to uh go through. It never occurred to me that that was an option, so I'm I'm just going to read very quickly, Madam Warden, through the presentation, if uh that's okay. And some of it, and some of it is uh old news, but I think that in the, at the end of it, you'll see why we're here tonight and and requesting the help from the county. So it started off, um St. Peter's is the oldest community, one of the oldest communities in in Canada. Used by the Mi'kmaq as a summer camp as they fished in St. Peter's Bay for thousands of years. The first non-native visitors were the Basques in the late fifteen hundreds who were also here because of the fishery. Later, the entrepreneur and explorer Nick Lee Denny's moved here and in sixteen fifty founded the community now known as St. Peter's. The village has been around ever since. Now home to approximately eight hundred people, St. Peter's is the shopping and business center for over five thousand Richmond County residents. And according to Parks Canada in two thousand seventeen, when they announced the new canal bridge, St. Peter's has the most year-round counts. Of traffic than any other community in Cape Breton. He made the point that Wicogum has more traffic through the summer, but. A year round, St. Peter's had more traffic going through. And it has been discussed in the mainstream media, the phenomenal movement of people from other parts of Canada, Nova Scotia. Has greatly impacted St. Peter's, with no less than twelve homes in the village being sold in the past year, some of them being, having been empty for years. Look, you've all heard that, you know, of the Kinnexal, we had a fitness center for twenty years here in the community. And it was led by a real innovative community leader involving health and fitness, he organized runs and other things. But the center was sold in the spring of twenty twenty one to another owner who leased it to new residents of Canada. Unfortunately, this new business didn't survive six months and closed in November, leaving the community without a gym. So with this new initiative, the Village Fitness Center Co-op Limited will again provide the residents of St. Peter's and the surrounding areas with a space. To maintain and improve their physical and mental health. The gym hopes to attract a wide range of gym users from around the St. Peter's area and beyond. The original owner of the old gym is our main advisor, and he says he had a peak membership of approximately a hundred and seventy members at one time. With a provincial campground, a large marina, motel inns offering accommodations and the traveling public. The rate of drop-in users is higher than normal for this type of business. And the nearest competition are the Body and Soul Fitness Center in Port Hoxbury and the IFit Center in Ayrshire, about approximately fifty kilometers from St. Peter's. As for distinct populations, the First Nations Community Budledek is less than fifteen clicks away from St. Peter's. And the former gym had a large component of users from this community. So the the Village Fitness Center will cater to all age groups and will benefit any user. By providing an opportunity for them to exercise and to contribute to their better physical and mental health. And the community groups that surround us will benefit from this project as well, specifically the workforce. The Richmond Villa Nursing Home, the staffing level around a hundred people, and the East Richmond Early Education Center, around fifty people. Will be offered group discounts, as will the members of the St. Peter's Volunteer Fire Department and the local emergency medicine technicians stationed in the village. During the past two years of the pandemic, Nova Scotia has been spending more and more time at home in their own community. The Village Fitness Center will help residents maintain and improve their health by providing a space for physical exercise, fitness classes, yoga classes. And other areas of interest as they arise. As the Village Fitness Center is being set up as a co-op, this will ensure a. By participation of the community as they purchase a share in the co-op and become members of the co-op. And as a co-op, as you all know, the members will all have an equal say in administration and direction of the VFC. The Village Fitness Center will be listed in the Nova Scotia Registry Joint Stocks. I received a a letter today from them saying that it's been processed. It's not officially out, I guess the number hasn't been issued. And as you might have known, the Village Fitness Center will be housing the vacated Nova Scotia Liquor Commission store in St. Peter's. With the other tenants such as the East Coast, Eastern Counties Regional Library and the Visor Information Center slated to also be in the building. The Fitness Center will take up a valuable area of the building and will allow the Village of St. Peter's to have full occupancy. This will also create a positive community hub in the middle, hub in the middle of the village, where all ages and generations will have a reason to visit. And and you know, the need for this project was demonstrated by the closing of the Fitness Center, which existed for the past twenty years. And and the sudden closure after only six months left many in the community scrambling to find alternative ways to maintain their fitness levels. There are carloads of people leaving this community and the surrounding areas every day, going to Ayrshire and Hoxbury to use the gyms there. But by taking the last available space in the community hub, it'll give the residents of the area the ability, the boost of a true community space. You know, where the gym is going is in the back of the liquor store, the old liquor store, where it was used as a warehouse. It has very high ceilings, very little. Extras on the walls and in the doorways, there's no installation center, so it'll be very easy to renovate. So the planning process for the new fitness center is involved many cross-sections of the community. Representatives of the Speedo are on a planning committee with the village staff to coordinate the enhancements needed to open the building for all three tenants. Uh the band council at Budledek has been aware of the project and has pledged support when it is needed. You know, when the former Fitness Center closed, there was a collective groan of despair throughout the village. An enterprise that had survived for twenty years served many people over that time and had many supporters. And when a search team scouted the area for a suitable place, the, and was pointed to the old Nova Scotia Liquor Store. The new vision was born. We held a community meeting that was filled to capacity with standing room only, and we had many offers of help towards. And the new Fitness Center opened. A Facebook page, Save the Gym, has created as a go, as was a GoFundMe appeal. We've collected over thirty thousand dollars so far, thanks to generous donations. And since the Board of Directors was created, a name the gym contest has been launched and plans are, plans are in the works to begin a fundraiser soon. There has been instant and continuous support from the village commissioners and staff. The Board of Directors have staff members from both the local hospital and the nursing home. We have a director from the First Nations Community Budledek. There's a senior citizen, that's me, a daycare operator, an electrician, two bookkeepers and three business owners. Also on the Board of Directors, so we think that the combined experiences and community involvement around the table will bring a healthy mix to the VFC. And its formational stages. The Board of Directors has an equal number of men and women on the Board of Directors. Hey, because it's two thousand twenty-two. The inherent risks that might affect timelines are contractor schedules, accessibility issues, and of course, obviously unknown contingencies. But it is a brick building built around the early nineteen sixties and in nineteen seventy-three, the store was expanded by approximately the third with this two-story addition on the rear of the building. And given a recent engineer's report on the condition of the building, any investment should only improve the viability of the building for many years. As far as equity, equity, the Village Fitness Center will address the needs of women and girls by holding women-only gym classes in. In times. As you know, the Village of St. Peter's, in cooperation with the county, has established a mandate to complete an accessibility study on March twentieth. A consultant has been hired and a series of online webinars and surveys are underway. Both government bodies have pledged to supply for the Rick Hanson Certification of Accessibility, considered the gold standard of equitable access. The VFC will reach out for the Richmond Rainbow Alliance, which is the LBG LGBTQ organization in the community. We've also contacted the Department of Community Services to see if their clients could benefit from the gym. And as previously noted, the residents of Budledek First Nation have been strong, faithful supporters of the local gym. And all indications are that they will continue to support such. The BFC will also schedule fitness classes for those considered handicapped and teach them how to safely use the equipment. We also will greatly contribute to the reduction of barriers when the Village in St. Peter's and the county finish and implement their accessibility plan. This will allow new guidelines for accessibility to be drawn in all construction plans for the building, with the gym included. The jet, Village has recently hired an engineer to provide the necessary plans to bring the building and its tenants. And the tenant's needs up to the National Building Codes, which includes the electroheating, ventilation and mechanical requirements. The Village Fitness Center has asked for quotes from security companies with regards to keep had access to members and security cameras as recommended by a successful company. As the building and parking lot was a commercial space, lighting is already present. So the success of the organization in this project is mirrored by the fact that. The community and the past Fitness Center users all point to the need for this facility to be reopened in St. Peter's. Then whereas the Board of Directors have many skills that will contribute to the overall success of the project. The presence of the person who owned and operated the former Fitness Center as a volunteer to the Board of Directors is an invaluable. Asset to the project. Marvin was present when the uh, when the uh manager of the. Department of Tourism, Culture and Heritage arrived to tour the building and look over the project. And he was quite impressed with both the space and the the knowledge that Marvin brought to the project. We were quite happy to have him. Building and maintenance will be the responsibility of the Village of St. Peter's and the internal maintenance of the gym equipment. And the gym will be under the advice of the former gym owner and be carried up by gym staff and volunteers. The project will improve the overall sustainability of the facility as the entire floor space of the building will now be utilized, giving the village some ability. To plan further capital expenditures with better confidence. The co-op has over thirty thousand dollars to through donations, as I said, and we've applied to the Nova Scotia Department of Culture Communities Tours and Heritage. For a recreational facility development grant. A commitment from the municipality tonight would help us show local government support for the project. A COA and the village are partnering on the preliminary work and engineers preparing CAD drawings of potential building uses. And the village has been getting quotes for the HVAC electrical piece. So we are tonight, the Village Fitness Center Co-op is asking the municipality for a grant of ten thousand dollars to help the gym get opened again. We would also request that the municipality consider inserting a further grant in the next year's budget for twenty thousand. I understand you will soon begin budget deliberations for the next fiscal year, and that's always fun. And if it was considered at this time, it would be greatly speed up the opening of the new gym in St. Peter's. And and I know for someone like any group to come in here at this late in the fiscal year with only six weeks to go. Probably has Don pulling on his hair because he could say, there goes my surplus and on. So I just wonder if the, there's anything, you know, we really appreciate any support we can get from the municipality, because uh. You know, it's 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 going to be a great project. I I think all around, it's a it's a wonderful building in the middle of the village and and. With those three different uses in it, it'll be continuously used and and hopefully protected. Well, thank you, and I'll be willing to take any questions. There are other people online here too.
Yeah, thank you, Claire. Um really appreciate the presentation. It's extreme, extremely informative. I heard lots about how you're. Trying to leverage funds and there's no question that, you know, you hit the nail on the head. This, I think the village is still feeling the the shockwaves of having lost the the gym that we've all enjoyed for so long there. Um and I know I'm still getting calls about it for sure. And so are there any questions from counselors um for Claire at this point? Uh Counselor Dinkton?
I guess I have, um, I I like the way Claire finished off with ten thousand this year and twenty maybe next year. I'm just wondering, is it thirty the year after or are we? Are we stopping? But that's not my question, actually, Claire, the uh, I, the way I'm aware. And correct me if I'm wrong, so are you looking to put this, have the building or have the fitness center set up in the basement, I guess, of the? Old NSLC or?
Well, it's really a a unique situation, because no, there's this two-story addition that we're going to be taking over. With the top addition where the warehousing was, they have like twenty, twenty-five foot ceilings. So it's great for a gym, lots of space, airspace, lots of headspace. Um downstairs is a little more convoluted because the steel beams run. Parallel to each other, but uh we, there's still room down there for certain machines, but.
And I just, they only ask that because I know currently, um and it just started up probably several months ago, they have a boxing club, the Richmond Warriors Boxing Club. That seems to be taken off very, very well. Um and I'm just, will that impact them at all in the uh?
Oh, they, they are, understand their, their lease with the village, or their agreement with the village says that they will move out when renovations start. And and they're quite aware of that. They're looking for another spot. If anybody has an empty. Community building or hall that they'd like to rent out to them, they they appreciate a call, I'm sure.
But also on top of that, I suppose, probably the people in the boxing club would like to have a local gym, right?
Well, I'm thinking, I'm I'm just wondering, can you amalgamate the two, considering there's probably a hundred, a hundred. Local boxers in there now that have joined men, women, children of all ages, so um. Again, I, I I don't like to to flip the coin and say we need a gym, but. I don't like to flip it and say we need to get rid of a hundred new boxers that are trying out something new. And I'm just wondering, is that something that can be incorporated in the?
Yeah, I'm quite familiar with the needs of the gym. Because my stepson is the, one of the leaders, so um I I think when. We've already had a quote for all the equipment to fit in the gym and there really isn't much floor space left, especially. That to accommodate a boxing ring, which is one thing that they, they are looking to purchase right now, so. You know, the, like, like Brent said, Counselor Sampson said, that, that Counselor Sampson. I don't know how you guys keep it straight sometimes. Okay, Counselor Sampson moved, uh which one was it?
All right, thanks, Claire. I, yeah, I understand your concern, Counselor Dinkton. I think um, that's a great, it's a great new club to have and um. I think at the end of the day, whatever happens with that building is going to require renovation, and so they're going to need another space anyway. That's, that's the reality. Deputy Warden, you have your hand up?
I do, um, so of course, when I was reading through the proposal and I was reading through the presentation over the weekend. Uh I couldn't help but think about our grants program of which uh I know this will shock you, Claire, but there's still money left in there. I had a quick look at. The budget and what we've used, what we've committed to, and there definitely is money in that budget. You know, you said the magic words of the Registry of Joint Stocks, because I think that's uh, that is a requirement. I did go through the document today. I didn't have a chance to reach out to the CFO, which I normally would have done, but it was just a bit tight for time. Um and so, you know, my opinion would be that your group should reach out to the CFO to gather the information. Um, and so, you know, my opinion would be that your group should reach out to the CFO to gather the information on the grants program that we have, and then you should put an application in right away in hopes that you can get in before we are done for this fiscal. Um, and I know that when we did the policy, we did allow, um, in the policy to have monies committed in this fiscal, but not necessarily spent till the next fiscal if it just didn't work out because of timing. So there, you know, there's, again, um, I don't want to speak for the CFO because he can give you more details, but you know, I'm feeling like the type four grants are ten thousand dollars. Um, their, their intention is for, um, health, uh, regional health, general grants. To me, uh, and, and again, I feel like, you know, like Counselor Dinkin says, correct me if I'm wrong, but to me, you fit perfectly into that bucket and, uh, you have money to match it. So, um, that would be my suggestion for sure. I think it's a great idea and definitely need in the community.
Yeah. Okay, um, and I, I would echo that the Deputy Warden's comments. I think definitely this would, you know, certainly at this stage in the game for our, for the way that we've set policy around investing in community organizations is we would need a grant application um, to be considered, to be able to consider your request for this year. And we, we accept those grant applications. Um, uh, uh, we, sorry, we review them at our committees as a whole. So you'll, you know, that's why we'll be talking about the Mariners later on this evening. Um, so we would need to get it from you in time for our March fourteenth meeting. And usually we like to give the CFO a week or two with that information. So if you could get the grant information assembled by the end of February, um, to the CFO, uh, then, then that would put, put you in good shape to be in time for our March committee of the whole meeting. Um, and then for future years, you know, you can either, you know, look to access the grant program again, which would be a maximum of ten thousand dollars through that regional health in general. Or, you know, you could submit a letter to council to consider at budget time as well. Um, because we do, you know, we, we do have a practice of making strategic investments in, in, uh, organizations. Um, if we deem them to be a priority of, uh, of, you know, of the county and of the, of council. So, um, so that's your second option for, for future years if you wanted to exceed the ten thousand in request.
Oh, that's perfect. I, I really appreciate the words from Deputy Warden about the grant application. I, 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 I used to be up on them, but I kind of slipped back, but I'm glad to hear that you didn't spend it all in, uh, the Mike. We were a little smell fishing in spring. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be ready for March fourteen for sure.
Okay, I just wanted to, before we drop the, the, just a reminder, Ward, Kenny, the hole is not March fourteen. It was, so it's actually the seventh. So just to give you a heads up on that, Claire, that you might need to do it a little bit quicker.
That's right. Thank you for the reminder on that, Deputy Warden. I forgot we adjusted our schedule to avoid the March break, uh, period so that we could all be in attendance. So, um, but, but Claire and, and team, like, I'm here, the CFO is there. We can work with you to help people have information together. It's quickly, it's possible.
Very much. Thank you for hearing.
Any other final questions, Claire?
No, just want to see Mike on the ice.
All right. Well, that's great. Thanks a lot, Claire and team, for all the work you've done on that. I know it's been a great community effort. Um, and I really appreciate you guys responding to the need, addressing the, the crisis and bringing it here to council for us to discuss as well. All right. Um, so I guess we'll move on to our next items on the agenda. So I have this item as listed for Counselor Brent Sampson, uh, Counselor Sampson. And that is, I think because it was you who had brought the idea of the electric vehicle charging stations to, uh, to council in the first place. And staff has provided a briefing note, and, um, I guess at this point I would just open it for discussion. Uh, Counselor Sampson or others?
Yeah, so I, I can start with it. So I, um, trying to learn a little bit more about these things. My, my original intent was more to do with the type three, I guess, and that was kind of what I was thinking along those lines. Just because if you were passing, you know, if, if you're traveling, let's say from Halifax to Sydney, there is one in Monastery and then I believe there's one in Victoria County that shows up, but, but that would be it. And so it would sort of force people to take the one oh five if they were considering using that. Um, that being said, I know that the costs are, you know, vastly different on the type two to the type three. As much as I think they're a good idea, maybe in our best interest to wait on a type three type situation, only because sort of like the, uh, information we're going to get, uh, from the CEO later tonight about some of these, uh, federal grants and so on that come out for different things. I, I would have been, uh, you know, months, years to come. Probably gonna be several funding opportunities for these types of things because if, honestly, if they would want people to change over to electric vehicles, we're nowhere near ready with the infrastructure anywhere, really. I mean, there's some, but not anywhere near the amount that would be required. So, um, as much as I, I'd like to see them. At this point in time, I thought maybe it's better on us to consider the type two, even a couple more strategic locations within the county to hang out for a bit of a longer period of time. Because these aren't really set up as much, you stop twenty minutes, half hour and then get back on the go. These are a few hours, right? So I'm sure that there's one around the canal and, and, and you know, that's the kind of thing for tourists to hang around a little while, right? And my thought was even possibly similar like Point Michel Beach or I don't know, the Pondville Beach or something like that, or, or even Rain and Lewis Dale or, you know, if there was other areas that we may want to consider for type two, um, because of the funding available time, we'll open the court for any other.
Yeah, those level two charging stations, uh, counselor, they take a much different, um, timeframe. Any other comments from counselors?
Yeah, I definitely would have been inclined as well, um, to have type three charging stations just because it would, you know, again, people would be not necessarily planning to stick around for a bit when they're traveling through. Uh, but I do feel as well that eventually there'll be some funding for those. And, uh, right now, if we're going to consider any, we should probably consider the type two because, uh, the Clean Foundation does have that funding right now. So I also noted that that funding is due by the end of March. Um, and so we are, we would be on a bit of a tight timeline. Um, I know that we have received information on a couple of locations uh, where we do have these type two. Um, did you just say there is one at the canal?
There's one in Saint Peter's.
Yeah, and there's one in Jammer's Island as well, right?
I'm not sure where the second one is. I know somewhere on the dam, yeah.
Yeah, in Jammer's Island. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, oh, sorry, Deputy Warden, if I'm not mistaken, there's two on the island, there's one actually at the restaurant on this goose. And it's just, it's just been set. Yeah, it was just set up about two months ago, month and a half ago.
So I wonder if, um, I mean, uh, is to ask Chris to prepare the briefing note for us to, um, get some quotations for the supply and then what the potential funding could be, right? And submit that application. So I think we need to think about where we want to put those and what that could look like.
So.
Get some rough numbers there in the briefing notes, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And pull them up quicker.
Yeah, he had said that level twos were between eleven-five and twelve-five plus installation exclusively just to.
Yeah.
But he did also say in his briefing note that if we, you know, if we really wanted to proceed with this, you know, to be able to make a final decision, that we could let him know, you know, what level we'd like, uh, and then some locations, so he could figure out whether or not the supply and.
What was the cost of the level three?
Sixty-five to seventy-five thousand. It's a big difference.
It's a huge chunk.
The thing is with that, Mike, is we can get, what is it, fifty percent funding with the level two where we can't get any funding at the moment with the level three.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. So where does this bring us? And again, it may have nothing to do with, with, uh, the, um, the same effect as, um, does this, does this affect us anywhere? Like, I know they put a, I guess the prime insurer, the premier put a hold on, uh, anybody with, I guess, um, what do you call them? My God, drawn a blank. I'll come back to it. Hold on.
Okay. Okay. Um.
That, Warden, uh, the funding is fifty percent to a maximum of five thousand.
Okay, so it would turn out to be less than fifty percent in all likelihood then, but still, it's a good chunk. Yeah.
And, um, Don, is that per unit or is that period?
That's, that is per unit.
Okay.
Keep in mind that the charging station price that they quoted, eleven-five to twelve-five is for a dual, a dual unit.
Yes, Chris had sent an email on that.
Yeah.
He said it's not for, he said it's not for dual charging stations. It's for two, for stations with two different types and the connectors, but only one can be used at a time.
Yeah.
That was the correction.
Sorry, so I, I guess, in, uh, being on my part, well, what's the charging station ran by? Is it strictly electrical or is it strictly solar panel or?
No, it's electric. It's, it would plug into the grid. So I just feel like, um, what we have now to provide, you know, to, to make a judgment call on where else we might need them. Do you know what I mean? Um, I, I feel like the one at the canal is a level two station, but I, I just don't know for sure. Um, and so I think those are some things we would want to find out. Um, and then, you know, like, we don't have budget for this fiscal, so I guess I would also I wonder, you know, is that something we would allocate, you know, in our neck, in which case?
You said that previously, that, you know, although the capital budget is approved, that we're able to make changes as programs come up. And I know that it's not on our capital list on long-term either, which we will probably want to add a bunch of deliberations. But I've also asked the question before and again, Don, if I'm, if I'm speaking incorrectly, let me know. But, but that if we had a project like this that came up that we hadn't considered as a priority, but was a priority, that we could still make adjustments. Is that correct, Don?
Well, we would probably have been provided the opportunity to prepare ourselves in case funding was made available.
Yeah.
I know the funding for the level two chargers is, the deadline is March eighteenth.
Um, but that.
They originally had a deadline July, but I think they extended the deadline, uh, beyond July to install.
Yeah, so the, the funding wouldn't come in this fiscal year anyhow.
Having a next fiscal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I notice I think the town of Porax is applying and they can't even redress and so on. Yeah.
So we want to, um, maybe ask Chris to, or two stations? Is that what folks are thinking now? I'm just not a hundred percent confident in determining the location of those stations without having a really good, good sense of what's out there now, right? So.
Yeah, because the briefing note just says two stations, one in Jammer's Island and one in Saint Peters. That's all.
I would assume he, for, for the application, though, I believe he'd need locations on them, right?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
That, that would serve two purposes. Obviously it would also serve to, uh, get a better estimate of the cost to install because depending on where it's at, it's going to be, it's going to be, uh, it's going to affect installation costs for sure.
It's right, yeah.
I know the one that the, uh, it's, sorry, the two that are on the island, um, boat apple seed energy, install them. One is at Appleseed's location where there is no charge to, uh, obviously, but, uh, the other one that is at the, um, the other one that is in this goose, I believe that's for their, um, you know, people that are there overnight or, yeah. Yeah.
So maybe what we could be prepared to do is to ask staff to investigate, um, you know, pricing the installation and proceeding with, uh, an application, but to be brought back to our, um, to our next meeting. Um, so that, you know, just in case an installation price, like if, like to your point, Counselor Sampson, I think, let me show you should be a really wonderful spot because there's a certain, you know, there's, there's so much programming that goes on there and it's a destination. Um, but at the end of the day, I'm not, like, I don't know, it seems to me the infrastructure required would probably be more expensive to in, install there, but I just don't know.
Well.
So we could, we could ask for that pricing.
Yeah, I believe in reading those briefing notes, one of the things too is the level twos don't require three-phase power.
That's right. No, I don't think so.
So that should be fine. Like, I know there's three-phase runs as far as Little Harbor for, for the lobster plant, but, um, I don't believe it beyond there. So that would be okay, I would think, for Point Michel Beach. But I mean, the, the arena was somewhere I thought of too, because sometimes people are going to be there for several hours. It's a, it's a municipal owned structure and, and it's, you know, fairly centralized within the county, right?
Yeah, I would agree with that one. It's on my mind.
Yeah, there, there, there are two sort of areas that don't have, aren't served by any right now. So, um, I'd be prepared to make a motion to ask staff to investigate, uh, based on those two locations. And if, you know, if we're to change our minds, then I'm like. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, no.
Well, I'm just thinking, I like those two options. I would probably also add our municipal building in Airshed as well. Right? Because that's in the central area in Airshed, although I know there are already, if there are already a couple in the, in the dam, I think it's on the other side. I, I'll just throw that one in and I guess I would ask, uh, Counselor Sean in terms of what may be suitable in the Tetera.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I, I think, uh, Warden, Marvicket used the operative word here. And then the word we should all be looking forward is, is destination, right? So if you, if you're looking at a, a two and a half, twelve, four-hour charge, uh, yeah, you're looking for a destination stop more or less, right? To, uh, to, to, you know, for people to, to, to say, okay, I'm going to charge my vehicle at the same time, but I'm going to spend, uh, two, three hours at a beach or at a, at a destination that's, you know, attracting people and tourists, right? So, uh, in, in Piteragro, I mean, of course, they're working at that monument park, uh, in Piteragro. So hopefully that, that'll be in, you know, in place, uh, in the next little while. Uh, you're looking at the, the Picas and Piteragro, that's always, uh, a destination for, for tourists, right? So, yeah, again, yeah, we, we have to strategize on, on places to put these things and make sure that they're destination areas for sure.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Deputy Warden?
So I'll change my comment about the municipal building. It's actually the Clearstone Inn that has the charging station, not the groundsman.
Right. Uh, yes, the deputy.
So that would be central in the area.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to ask staff to look at the three locations, like Lefty Cast and, and the arena in Lewisdale and Point Michel Beach. Lovey Cast, sounds like it would make a lot of sense as well. We got a library right there. Let's, you know.
Yeah, and it's also, it's, uh, it's just, it's right next to the ball field, which is, uh, you know, huge, uh,
Yeah.
All summer long, yeah.
Okay. So Counselor Sampson, did you want to make that motion, Brett?
Yeah, okay, uh, I can make a motion for staff to investigate the, or to begin the process of, uh, yet filling out applications. Funding for the three locations as listed for level two chargers, uh, Lefty Cast, the arena, and Lewisdale and Point Michel Beach.
Okay, first, we, that we don't, we'd obviously, uh, kind of.
Yeah, and there was a.
Go ahead.
You know, I'll wait till the second.
Can I have a second here on that motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Dinkin. Um, so any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, uh, Corin, remember get, uh, because I was thinking about Point Michel Beach as well. And I thought we may be able to, uh, I, I hope it will be able to be done as well, based on the fact that we do have, uh, it's a building there for the, this perfect, and so on and that. And there is, there is some shared usage there between the municipality and the province.
From discussion, huh?
All right.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so Counselor, uh, Dinkin, uh, you added an item here regarding, uh, the Lewisdale Food Bank. So, things over to you.
I did. So first, I'm going to apologize to the Deputy Warden and the CEO because I didn't get a chance to send them out in any information on it. And I saw that it's all on me, but I, uh, I didn't want to have the, miss the opportunity of, uh, missing another meeting in going forward. So, about a month, month and a half ago, they have a little, well, not a little, I guess, they were housing the food bank for many, many years. We're actually doing it out of their homes in Lewisdale. missing another meeting in going forward, so about a month, month and a half ago, they have a little, well, not a little, I guess, they were housing the food bank for many, many years, we're actually doing it under their homes in Lewisdale. And they finally decided this year that they, uh, they did it long enough and it was time to, uh, move on and so forth, but, so Lewisdale Lions Club, um, with one or two other clubs, I believe, are getting together and forming an organization. And within that organization, they're actually looking for a place to house, I guess currently house their food bank, um, whether it be temporary or permanent, um, so I thought, in the interest of tone. Um, last thing you want to do is have anybody without food or a place to go for food, um, that if the, the arena canteen, um, wasn't being used over the summer or in the next several months, that that may be a place to, um, set up the food bank, whether it be, even if it's just to, uh, I guess to pick up or drop off, just so they can have a place to store the food. Um, looking at many ways, they're not sure yet if they're gonna go with a pickup location or if they're just gonna go with a just, distribution setup where they're going to deliver it to the houses of the people that need it, uh, so that's something that the organization will all work through, but, I just thought that, you know, maybe I'd bring it to council and again into our CEO, on side, but maybe our CEO can shed some light or look into it to see if that is an option available to them to, uh, since the canteen currently isn't being used out there, um, that spot might be, you know, an ideal location for new.
Thanks councillor Digtin. Um, so, so just so unclear, um, councillor, that, that request and the, and I guess the need is that they, they're looking for sort of like a, a home for the food bank, but, like, in terms of it being open as, as certain frequencies, is it just like, would, would they be requiring building access for the, you know, for the members of, like, of the clients of the food bank to come in and out of the canteen area, or would it be just that the organizers would be storing things there, or do you have that level of detail yet, it might be too early days.
Well, it, yeah, it's toward, they were, that was a debate they were going back and forth with, was, um, you know, are they going to do some ready, ready boxes? Where they just take the names of the person that requires the food and deliver it to them, and this just be, you know, the place. Um, one thing, I do know, one thing that was, that was huge was the, um, to be a member of, uh, you know, the food, um, uh, at a Halifax.
Yeah, the Food Feed Nova Scotia.
Feed Nova Scotia, uh, one, uh, one of the main, major requirements was there had to be a division, um, like, more or less the canteen setup where you can separate food on one side and have a distribution on the other, and the canteen permits that, it also permits a washing station, because it's got the sinks and everything already set up. Um, so then they were towards greater requirements that, that the canteen already met by, by being there, so. Yeah, they, they haven't decided if, if it's just gonna be a walkthrough and pick up or if it's going to be, uh.
Okay. Okay.
I just wonder why councillor Digtin's dealing with that, is, is that the Lions Club is, of course, in councillor Digtin's district, so, they cert- they invited both of us to the meeting, I was already committed to another meeting at the time, so he went to kind of represent us. Um, but just to give a little bit of history, which I would know a bit more, of course, about how the food bank had worked, has worked in Lewisdale in the past, is that the coordinators would do it on an as needed basis, so when somebody would call in need, they would actually go to the co-op and they would pick up the items that the, the people needed and they would bring it to them, so they didn't have a lot of stockpile, now, when things would go on sale, they would stockpile a bit of those common items at their home, as councillor Digtin has said, and so, they're just needing a little bit of space for that, um, you know, they, they were, you know, in speaking with, um, the headline, uh, Tommy Sampson before the meeting, he had mentioned that they were sort of looking at a different approach to it, which could involve actually having a physical location, which would allow them to be part of Feed Nova Scotia, but they were still a bit conflicted in terms of like budgetary, you know, the, the cost of doing that, right? So we had chatted a little bit about the grants and, and other pieces that they maybe could access, but as, as councillor Digtin has said during that meeting, I, from what I understand, that I'm hearing, and, and so, like, I'm sort of just trying to summarize it myself, is, is that they were just looking for a short-term solution of a location, and they were, and then, and you had suggested that maybe the arena could work for that, is, is that what you mean? I, I mean, I, yeah, okay, so I mean, uh, it's sound, it's like, on the surface, that sounds like a great plan, but certainly deferring to the CFO, because I think, um, in my own experience of needing to access the arena at off times, like in the morning when staff is not necessarily there, because some of the work that I do with minor hockey, it's not always open, and I mean, it was certainly, I, I can't imagine we would want to give someone access to the arena who's not a municipal employee, so there, I'm just, I'm expecting that perhaps Don's comments might involve some concerns with that, and also like the ability to access it, especially during the off season, on the weekends and evenings, right, like during the season, it's, the arena is actually open most evenings and all weekends, but I would be a bit concerned about, about that, that's all.
I, I do know, um, rea- real quick before she kind of chimes in, I do know there was some, um, I guess, uh, some pointers given to them, and then one of them was, I know, out of here in West Erie Shad, uh, it's every two weeks, it's on, it's on a certain day at a certain time, and that, that is the time that you have to get it, Oxbury, I believe is the same setup, it's, you know, it's at a certain date, certain time, and you have to get it, and I believe Lewisdale was actually going to look at the same thing, instead of a call in, they were going to say, you know, this is the time you need to get it, you know, if you miss it, you miss it, so, it, it might be something that our summer staff might be able to work around for letting somebody in for an hour and then blocking back up in an hour, uh. I don't know, again, I just said that I would bring it to her, to the table and.
Okay.
Here it is.
Thanks councillors. Okay, so Don, I don't know if you have any comments on this, or if you'd like to kind of connect with staff, do some more digging on it, I'm just like to hear from you at this point.
Um, I would suggest perhaps, uh, uh, asking staff to provide some details in a report regarding, um, that proposal. There would be, there would be a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, details to, to work out, and, uh, not sure if, uh, if we could line everything up properly, uh, the arena does shut down, uh, April, and, and the last couple of years, we have had no, uh, no summer staff in there whatsoever, uh, due to limited, uh, limited, um, programming because of the pandemic. And of course, there are other things like insurance that we'd have to look at and, uh, and, uh, uh, liability, liability would be certainly one that we'd have to look at for sure and discuss with our players as well, so. Uh, I would suggest just, you know, making a motion to have staff provide a report for the council meeting, perhaps, if we could, I mean, and, I mean, we have time, although perhaps the people that are in, that are housing the bank now don't, don't have a lot of time, and that it's, it's something that they want to, uh, release themselves of rather quickly.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what the timeline is, I, I do think, um, I do think rather than just the staff report, though, I think maybe we would want to ask staff to work with the proponent, to work with the Lewisdale Lions Club, to come up with a most likely to work, work scenario, um, as opposed to, uh, kind of try and do a report on that in a vacuum, right, because, because we really don't know what they have in mind, and I think if, um, if staff was able to kind of communicate some of our constraints, then perhaps they could design a solution together, um, to, to, you know, operate within those constraints, so, um.
Well, we certainly don't know if, uh, if the arena is, is a, is a good option at all, so I, I think we need to make that clear first, whether or not we want to, um, you know, put, put that, that type of, uh, food bank or that, that situation in our arena, whether it's the, whether it's the, uh, the canteen or in, in a, in a location, uh, elsewhere in, in the arena.
Councillor Sampson.
Yeah, I, I meant to ask this at the beginning there, councillor Digtin, I'm not sure if it's, is it like, um, would this likely be a short-term thing as well, because the, the, the reason I say that, I'm assuming that, uh, there's gonna be tenders, or they're gonna try and get somebody in operating the canteen next year, hopefully.
Um, yeah, no, um, hon- honestly, for the, uh, for right now, I believe it was just the, uh, just a short-term, uh, solution, uh, again, you know, I, I don't know, we, I don't know if we, we put out for tenders last year for somebody to operate the canteen, but nobody come forward, I don't believe. So it, it could be one of those things where we put it out again this year and nobody comes forward to, to operate the canteen as well. But, but they are aware that, you know, if they do set up, you know, we do operate the canteen, or we were, we did, uh, operate the canteen, and they potentially have to, uh, you know, I guess they will potentially have to move, but current, currently their main, their main thing is to, if they are going to build something, it was to give them time to get everything set up to, you know, the needs and specifications that they wanted or required.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Debbie Ward.
Look, I'm just feeling that there may be something between sort of your suggestion, Warden, and your suggestion, Don, in terms of like how we would proceed from here. And so I would say, like, in the essence of time, because I, my understanding is that the, the folks who are taking care of the food bank, like in the new year, that we're wanting to, we're wanting to kind of, uh, remove that responsibility from their life, and they've done it a very long time, and so, I, I, and right now, I don't know if it's the Lions Club that's taking care of it, like, I don't even know what situation they're in at this minute, regardless. So I, I just wonder if there's a way that staff could say, you know, is it possible in any capacity, right, like, does insurance allow it in any way or whatever? And then they could chat with, with Tommy at the Lions to see if what we could do can work for what they're wanting to do, or, or also if they chatted with Tommy to say, like, what would you envision in a perfect world as a short-term solution? And then we could investigate whether or not it's possible, like, I, I, I just, I feel like if we, if we get a report from staff in terms of whether we could do it, that may not actually answer the questions or serve the, that may not be what the Lions Club is thinking of at all, right? So they could have made some changes to their plan since meeting with councillor Digtin, because that was a fair while ago, um, that you, that I think that meeting happened, like, definitely over a month, would be my, would be my recollection, um, and so, I know that Tommy hasn't talked to me about it since that meeting. I think he was just leaving it with, you might do, uh, to figure out, so I'm just wondering if, like, as a first step, a quick chat to say, like, what do you envision, and then maybe for.
Yeah, I think you're bang on, Deputy Warden, you know, we can't determine the feasibility of something that we don't have the details on, right, and nobody can do that, so, you know, I guess my, my thought would be, you know, for staff to, uh, to work with the Lions Club to determine the potential feasibility of this as even a short-term solution. I think that's probably our most timely and responsible path forward. Um, so, is, uh, if, if there's no further questions, I don't know, would, would councillors be prepared to make that type of motion, or? Well, some other form of motion?
I, I would be, but I, I would allow councillor Digtin to make it if he prefers, he did bring it to the table, so.
Yeah, no, that, that's one way, I, I have no problem, yeah, and make a motion to have staff work with the, um, I'm just gonna say, um, maybe Tommy or the organization in charge of the food bank in Lewisdale, um, to, uh, I guess, what, look at possibilities?
To determine the feasibility.
To determine the feasibility of, yeah, using the, uh, the canteen as a temporary setup.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you Deputy Warden, uh, is there any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say hi.
All right.
Hi. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, thank you, uh, councillor Digtin for bringing that forward. Um, next is councillor Sean Sampson, you've had several items, um, starting with the twenty twenty-two P V S C tax assessment increases.
Yeah, so not sure about, uh, the rest of our team, uh, but I fielded enormous, uh, calls on, on the recent, uh, two thousand twenty-two P V S C tax assessment on properties. People were concerned, some of them seen their, their property assessments go up, uh, pretty drastically, and uh, when looking into numbers, uh, it was on average about eight percent. Uh, so, uh, on my, uh, District One, uh, Facebook, uh, page, I did break down what that eight percent would cost, uh, a taxpayer. It's, uh, approximately sixty-five dollars for every hundred thousand dollars of assessment. Uh, so, so a hundred thousand would be sixty-five, two hundred thousand, one thirty, two hundred thousand, one ninety-five, so. It i- it is, uh, it is an increase, uh, you know, for people that, uh, are paying more for gas and more for groceries and, the cost of living is, is going to fall a ton, right, so. I, I did also put, if, if residents did want to, uh, figure out their own, uh, personal, uh, tax increase, it would be simply just to take their increase. There are six, seven, eight thousand dollars, uh, divided by a hundred for every hundred dollars of assessment, uh, times that by the point eighty-one of our tax rate, and then be able to figure that out, so the example I used, uh, was seven thousand, and that represented uh, fifty-six dollars and seventy-seven. Yeah. Uh, if. Taxes was, uh, not seven thousand. Uh, so, people were looking at appealing and asking, you have to ask yourself, when you're looking at appealing, the replacement cost would be to replace your property today, right, so, those are all important questions that the taxpayers got asked themselves when, when appealing their tax assessment, right? Uh, where, where, where I had a few questions, and then maybe Don, uh, you would be able to answer this, or the CFO, or the revenue manager. We, we've all, we've all heard, you know, taxpayers say, well, yeah, well, my taxes didn't go up this year, but my tax assessment went up six thousand dollars, or seven thousand dollars, so I'm paying more taxes, right, and the hard reality is that, that's one hundred percent true, right, so. I'd be interested to know, I mean, we're right around, uh, budget time, uh, you know, can't believe I'm saying that, but we're only two months, two, two and a half months away from discussing budgets again, right? I'd be interested to know, uh, CEO, Marshall, what the average, what the average tax assessment, uh, for a property would be, uh, in Richmond County, is it two hundred, is it two fifty, is it one fifty? And then I would be interested to, to know how many residential properties in Richmond County, was it forty-five hundred, is it five thousand res- residential properties? I'm just trying to figure out the revenue that this P V S C tax increase is gonna, you know, take in, so, for example, if it's five thousand residents at a two hundred thousand dollar assessment on average, you're looking at five thousand, uh, residents at a hundred thirty dollars increase, so you're looking at a, a revenue of six hundred fifty thousand dollars coming into our county, because of all these, uh, tax increases, right, so, could, could we look at that, finding that information, I'll tell you, Marshall, please.
So just kind of doing some basic equations, I guess.
Yeah, I, again, again, Madam Morton, I'm a numbers guy, I've always been a numbers guy, I'd like to see what this average, which, which again, you know, looking at some numbers, looking at my taxes, I've been in, in other residents of District One, averages about eight percent. So again, if it's sixty-four, eighty for every hundred thousand dollars of assessment, then, and the average, uh, residential tax assessment in Richmond County is a two hundred thousand dollar property, uh, that reflects a hundred thirty dollars of increased taxes on, I'd say five thousand residents, it's six hundred fifty thousand dollars, and so, I, I'd just be interested to see what, what, uh, what that, uh, incurs.
Don, did you have any comments on that?
Well, one thing I can say is that, uh, we've noticed and, and it's been, it's been out there that the assessments have increased completely right across the province, and the bigger hits have been, um, located in metro Halifax, the, the urban centers, um. I'm not really sure about how, how to figure out those numbers, I, I don't know if we have any averages, or I don't know if we have, uh, an indication of what average increase per hu- household would be, it's, it's, it's quite complicated, there's such a wide range of, of, it's out there, and, um, of course, there are, there are commercial, uh, assessments as well, that would be, play a part in there, um. Obviously, this, this type of conversation is certainly something that we would table at a budget, at our budget sessions, and, uh, discuss at that, at that, at that time. Um, I'm not really sure what,
Hmm.
what we would be looking to do with, uh, you know, with, with the, with the conversation that we're having regarding the assessment increase. Uh, normally what would happen is, is that these, these, these increases in assessment would, would, uh, would cover potential increases in our expenses that would, that are also rising as we speak, so. Um, sometimes it's not, it's not easy to, uh, to tell that, that an increase in assessment is gonna provide us with this great amount of money, because obviously expenses do increase over time, and those things are all coordinated when we, when we, when we discuss the expenses that we need to incur with the, with the revenue that we're gonna get, and create, uh, a change in, in the tax rate to affect that. So, uh, certainly is a, a complicated discussion and something that we would normally hold during budget deliberations.
Yeah, so, so Don, and I'm not even sure. Yeah, so, so Dawn, and I'm not even sure, like, I, I know the assessments are coming out in people's mailboxes now, but I guess, I, I would wonder when, when does the county get an update from PVSC? And I guess for the folks who are joining us, just to provide some clarity, the county, uh, only has control over setting the tax rates. Um, the, the property assessments are determined by pro- by an organization called Property Evaluation Service Corporation. So, um, so tho- those assessments are outside of our control, but I wasn't sure, Dawn, when would we normally receive some kind of update from PVSC on what the, you know, a full assessment?
We, we've already received, uh, uh, an assessment role. Obviously, those changes, um, as those are appealed and, and appeals are heard.
Right.
Changes are made. So, uh, I don't think that in the past, and, and I can find out from Jason, I don't think in the past that changes due to, uh, appeals on residential assessments have, have been that great, that, that really affected the, the bottom line or anything like that, so. Uh, sometimes we get those changes after the, uh, after the budget is, uh, is complete, but not really significant in a way of change when, when it comes to assessment appeals. But we do, but we do have our, but we do have a role that, that is-
Do have a role now, okay. Uh, Counselor Sampson?
It's one-
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Dawn.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we, I mean, we all recall last year during budget deliberations where the mandatory contributions increased by close to a hundred thousand, so, I mean, uh, even depending on what, you know, I guess we'll see at that time, once we get to budget, um, how much these ra- uh, increased assessments had an impact, but, uh, depending on things like mandatory contributions and so on and that, and, you know, fuel costs are higher, everything else, i- i- it may not be, it may not be much of a windfall at all, really, but, uh, until we get into budget deliberations, really, I guess there's not much we can do with that right yet.
Yeah, it's a little bit like crystal balling, right? But, um, but I think, you know, Sean, if you had some specific questions, um, you know, I, and I know that, uh, Jason is not here with us this evening, I, I would suggest maybe if you wanted to, you know, pop them into an email, and if they're answerable either easily, or, um, or maybe will take a little bit longer and involve, you know, require us to kind of deal with a budget, then you, maybe that would be kind of a good place to start. I, I do think it was, it's a smart thing, though, for us as a municipality to be kind of flagging for our residents that, you know, in our, in our commercial, uh, payer, rate payers that, you know, the, you, you're likely all seeing increases, the entire province is seeing increases. Um, as Dawn mentioned, more so in urban areas than anywhere else, uh, but, but just know that those assessment rates are, those assessment values are set by the province and through PVSC, and then, um, our job is to set the tax rate, so. Um, yeah, so would that, would that kind of serve your purpose for now?
Yeah, no, for sure, yeah. And again, you know, I'm just trying to figure what, what all these numbers are gonna be in the future and come budget deliberation time, so I would just more or less interested in, in, in an average of, of the tax assessment and how many residents, uh, how many properties are, are being taxed in Richmond County. That's, that's the only questions I had. But, uh, and again, if you go on the, the PVSC website, it does detail the, uh, the assessment process for, for the residents, so they can see how it, uh, how it is decided and what the process is all about.
That's great. Perfect. Okay, so, um, next item on the agenda then is disposal, disposal options for electronics.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if, if, again, the rest of the team, uh, got some phone calls on this, and I'm not sure if, uh, if there is a plan in place for the future, but, uh, I've been told that our, uh, our local, uh, depots that were collecting electronics are no longer collecting, uh, electronics. And I'm also sure, I'm pretty sure that our landfill site does not take in electronics. So, we have some residents asking, where do they dispose of their electronic devices? Their televisions, their DVD players, their stereos, anything? Uh, because it seems like right at the moment, there is no option for them. So I don't, I don't know if, uh, CEO, uh, Marshall, if you, if you have any answers to that, or if Chris, uh, our Public Works Department would have answers, but again, uh, I think we're faced with, uh, people that, uh, don't know where to take their electronics.
So, did you have comments on that?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm unaware of, uh, I, I thought we, I thought we had two depots on the, on the, in our, in Richmond County.
Yeah.
Uh, unaware that they've clo- that they're closing, or they're not taking anymore.
Yeah, yeah, both, both of them were the, uh, were the bottle depots, CEO, and, uh, I was told in Arishat, yeah, that it was no longer, and I was told that the, the one in Peters was, uh, following suit as well.
Okay, well, I think we definitely need to get, um, some confirmation on that. I don't know if we could ask staff to reach out to our, our depots to, to kind of find out the context, because if, you know, number one, has it for sure stopped? Number two, is that temporary? Goodness knows, COVID has been causing all kinds of service interruptions, um, and then, you know, if it has been halted, then, then why? Um, would that be, I guess, some good first steps for us to begin with? Okay.
I would suggest as well that, you know, if we find out that it isn't temporary and that it is confirmed, like, what are our options in terms of, of our waste facility, if we're able, if there's a way that we're able to accept them there, or what's, you know, to just maybe come up with, um, a suggestion of how we could solve the problem in the county?
Okay. Okay, so could I have a motion then to ask staff to, um, look into disposal options for electronics, uh, in Richmond County?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
Second motion.
Thanks, Counselor Dikin. Um, any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks, everyone. And back to you, Counselor for Sean Sampson for the next item, safety concerns for students at Municipal and the Cobbleport Road Entrance.
Yeah, so, uh, over the last, uh, week or so, I've gotten a few calls from some concerned parents, uh, stating, uh, their concern for safety of, uh, kids that walk to and from school at Pedacol Bopor. Uh, and I'm sure, uh, I'm sure the residents on this call and all the taxpayers of, of Arishat and, and Al Madam can, can, uh, can all agree that, uh, our Arishat Main Street and our, uh, municipal building and all the work that's been done in front of our building is, is, is beautiful work, and all the sidewalks and, and, and everything that's been done in front of our building is, is incredible. Uh, but when you look at the driveway going up to the school and coming down from the school, there's no shoulder there, there's no room for kids or anybody to walk up or down those driveways. There's puddles in those driveways, so. I did have some parents reach out that is, you know, to see if there can be some sort of, uh, consultation between, uh, our Public Works, our, our municipal staff, and maybe some administrative staff at, uh, CSAP or at the Cobbleport to see if something can be, uh, can be done in the future to rectify that, uh, that safety issue for some of the parents.
Okay, um, thanks, Counselor. Um, it's, certainly this is, uh, this is not something I've heard much about, but I'm, you know, I'm assuming it's, you know, it's in your backyard, right? So you're going to live in here.
Yeah, and, and, and ever since I've, I've, I've fielded some of those calls, I've, I've brought it upon myself to, to go up and, and take those drives, and there's been beautiful work done in the, in the driveway to, to address safety concerns for the buses up at Cobbleport, so there's, there's sidewalks there, there, there's, there's things in place. Uh, our, our driveway as well at the municipal offices, you know, there's sidewalks there, and, uh, but going up and down those driveways where the, where the buses, I've even heard that some, some bus drivers are even concerned for the kids coming up and down the driveway, right? In the mornings or in the afternoon, so, yeah, just, I don't know if that's something that we wanna, you know, again, have some consultation and have some discussions with the, the staff at the Cobbleport and our staff to see if we can try to put some kind of lane there, or, you know.
Who would own, who would own that piece of land, like that?
Oh, would that, would that be us, Dawn, or?
Kind of hard to move my mouse, unmute me.
That's okay.
Paper. Um, so the property itself is, uh, is, is all municipal property, however, the property that is uh, located with the school is, is under the care and control of the CSAP, so, um, essentially, it's their responsibility at, at that end now. The roads going up, up and down are, are driveways and their right-ofways. Uh, it's, it's, it's very unlikely that there's anything set on, on a document to indicate that those are right-ofway, so they serve as our entrances as well, so we, 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 we'd likely have a responsibility to make them safe, but, uh, to what extent? Do we, do we go all the way up? Uh, what, what, what is, what is it exactly that we do, so?
Right. Yeah, and, and again, Dawn, again, Dawn, maybe that's discussions that, that we have to have with the administration at the CSAP and and the Cobbleport that this, exactly, you know, the answer to those exact questions that you just said, how far do we go? What do we do? What are the steps? How do we address that, right?
Um, okay, so I, I guess at this point, maybe our, our most reasonable first step would be to check in with the Cobbleport, uh, to, you know, to find out if they're hearing, um, safety concerns as well, and and I guess I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the extent of the problem, do you know what I mean? And, and, and what, what the, I guess, perspectives are of the different organizations that are using that, that route. Um.
So I, I know one of the, um, I just head on, I guess, to, uh, Counselor Sampson's, one of, one of the concerns is the, uh, especially at lunchtime, some of the kids run down to the, um, you know, for a slice of pizza or whatever, so they run down the driveway, which is potentially the inlet for the buses, all incoming traffic to the, you know, the municipal alley into the school, so therefore it's kind of, I mean, you're kind of head-on, I guess, into traffic and nowhere really to go, because there is no sidewalk. So potentially, I think, if we look, if we had to look at a sidewalk, it would only really be on that one side, which is the inlet side going in, you know, for kids to go up and down from the school.
Yeah, Deputy Warden?
Uh, so of course, my thoughts are, you know, the, our, uh, Director of Public Works, I, I just feel like Chris should probably connect with the transportation folks at the CSAP, and they could together kind of think about what, you know, is there an issue? What does that look like? What could a potential solution look like? Who would pay? What would, you know, all of those parts, so. Uh, I'm just wondering if maybe that's the recommendation that we should make through motion is to ask Dawn to perhaps ask our Director of Public Works to connect with the CSAP to talk about safety concerns and potential solutions.
Yeah, we, we, uh, I, I totally agree, Deputy Warden, that's, that's, that's where we should go, and there should be some some consultation between those groups, uh, that's what our next. And, uh, back to your point, Counselor Dikin, we're, we're also forgetting that the Ifit Center is also there, so you have people going to Ifit Center during the day, that's, and in the morning, uh, that, that is also adding to that traffic, uh, flow, right, so.
Okay. So, uh, could I have a motion then from Council to provide staff with some instruction? Move forward?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, but the motion is to, um, ask our public work or to, I guess, ask staff, um, because we would leave that to, to Dawn to determine who, but to ask staff to connect with the CSAP to discuss safety issues.
Yep.
On that roadway.
And determine possible solutions.
Steps, yeah.
You know, like, again, you know, if they determine that there's an issue, what would be the solution?
The next step.
Like, all the way through, because I just feel like we could be in two, you know, one-month increments getting information.
Exactly, yeah. Okay. Okay, so the motion then is to ask staff to connect with CSAP to discuss safety concerns on that uh, roadway and to determine potential solutions. So could I have a second or on that motion, please?
I'll take that motion.
Counselor Dikin, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, thanks very much, uh, Counselor Sean Sampson. Uh, we'll move on to Deputy Warden Melanie Sampson regarding road conditions in District Three.
Thank you, Warden. So I've, uh, talked to several residents, uh, in the Langley Lane area of, um, of Point Pepper, which is not a new, uh, it's not a new road that folks have heard about at the council table, talked about before. I know that we do, I know we do have an application with the Provincial Department of Public Works to get a pricing on some, uh, paving there. Um, and I have connected with our local MLA, and he's connected with the local Department of Public Works in terms of, um, the, the poor conditions of the road this winter in terms of snow removal, ice, just, you know, flooding, and so in general, uh, many concerns there. Um, I've also, uh, talked with many, um, with residents, uh, living on the Evanston Road as well, who had similar concerns to the ones that Counselor Sean Sampson had mentioned last week in, or last meeting regarding the Upper Road and the Lower Road near Shad, and, you know, some flooding, some road erosion, um. And so I, I guess, you know, certainly not looking for us to solve these, uh, at the council table, but to look to council to, um, you know, allow or direct the Warden and I to, to draft a letter to the Department of Public Works and, and CCR local, and I, just to reinforce those concerned areas, uh, in the district.
Um, and Deputy Warden, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to take notes and, and, uh, listen at the same time, but did you mention the Evanston Road? Is that the one you meant?
Evanston Road and Langley Lane as being two, you know, right now, those are two big concerns, uh, because they are, there, there are safety issues, uh, it, Langley Lane in particular, there are huge safety issues. Um, and Evanston, uh, Road, there's a lot of erosion issues there as well, so that does provide a lot of issues. You know, with a lot of ice lately, we've had a lot of concerns from residents in that area as well in terms of, um, solid waste collection has been a problem, because the road floods, it freezes, and then we can't go do collection. I, I think it had been three weeks since we had been able to get out there, so. Just, uh, a- again, not that it's not recognized by our local MLA or the Department of Public Works, they also recognize that these are concerned areas, but, uh, I always am of the opinion that, uh, a letter has a little extra weight from the phone calls that we make and emails that we send. And so, again, not, not looking for solutions, just, just looking for, you know, the support of council for you and I to, um, together come up with a letter.
Okay. Counselors be in favor of us, uh, putting that letter together? Does that affect?
Or, oh, I guess, well, for me, I probably, uh, I don't know, I'd have to declare conflict or nonsense, I, I work on that side of the table as well, but. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, well, maybe if you, if you feel lead-
Maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah, therefore I won't, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So if counselors are in favor of that, and even yourself Deputy Warden, if you wanted to make that motion.
Yeah, I would. So I'd like to make a motion to direct you and I to collaborate in creating a letter of concern regarding road conditions at Langley Lane and Evanston Road.
Okay. Can I have a second around that?
So you're doing a motion.
Thanks, Counselor Sean Sampson. So any further discussion? Okay, so all, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, entered from that vote, so. Um, okay, so the next item, uh, count, the Deputy Warden is impact of power outages on Bell Infrastructure in Dundee-St. George's Channel. It's a mouthful.
It is indeed. Um, so around this time last year, I received a complaint from a constituent in the Dundee area that when the power is out for any amount of time, um, the landline services cut out, because basically the batteries at those stations are not uh, up to date, or they haven't been, they're, they're poor. Um, and so at that time, I did work with the local MLA, what the time was aligned upon, and we had connected with Alliance and asked them to do something about it. Um, and what I have realized after our recent power outages is that that has still not been corrected. Um, and so obviously, again, my, my advocacy work in that area didn't quite accomplish what I was hoping. Uh, and so again, just looking for counsel, uh, to provide support for the Warden and I to collaborate on a, a letter, you know, asking them to address it. It is a huge concern. Uh, we know about other areas where landline service has been, uh, terrible during power outages, uh, especially in areas like the Dundee-St. George's Channel area, where there is like little, no cell service and a great population of seniors who perhaps do not have cell phones. So this is absolutely a safety issue that, uh, Alliance needs to address, in my opinion, sooner than later.
Okay, thank you Deputy Warden. Counselor Brent Sampson?
Uh, my only request on that would be whether or not-
Uh, my only request on that would be whether or not we could add Grand River on that same letter, because. Have the same issues here, and it's the copper degradation, they're telling us, and so on, but. Um, to my knowledge, very little of anything is being rectified.
Could I add that maybe it may be, it may be useful if we also would collaborate with the local MLA in terms of that letter, like, again, a letter that would be sent from. Both the municipal and provincial, and and in speaking with with MLA Boudreaux, I think he would be in support of that as well, like. He's aware of the issue and and again, is advocating for correction of it, and so. Um, I don't know if we've done that in the past, you know. Would he do a letter and we do a letter, and we would send them at the same time, or could we do one sort of together, and I don't know, but. Uh, I just feel like the more political weight we put behind it.
Yeah, that's a really great idea, and I mean, I I guess we can't really predict power if he'd like to um. To, you know, join us in that advocacy, I I I could guess, but he does want to join us in the advocacy, I I.
Okay, great. That about it, now I haven't talked to him about the idea of a joint letter, it just came to my mind tonight. Um, so, you know, but I do know that he is interested in advocating with us for the, you know, correction.
Okay, so the motion could just simply state that, that to request that um we collaborate with the local uh MLA. Um, to, you know, put a letter of concern together for Bell on the impact of power outages and their and their infrastructure in Dundee St George's Channel and Grand River.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
And if others have similar, like, I just haven't heard about others, so. In my area, I know about that areas, um, I will also say when I spoke to them the last time, so. Uh, councillor Sampson, what may be useful is um they had asked me for a civic address of the person who was complaining about it. And so, um, maybe if you could get civic addresses of a couple of people that you know are having issues. With landline and power outages, they apparently this is. It's part of their process, it didn't help much last time, but we should maybe include that this time, right, in the, right in the letter.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I think, uh, so Deputy Warden, just so I'm clear, when you're thinking like that Dundee St George's Channel. I would assume that's going to include like the Black River area, because we know there's no cell signal there, so when the, like, would that kind of all be included?
So I haven't gotten any complaints about the landline not working there in power outages, so perhaps their little power box or whatever that battery. Piece is working in that area.
Okay.
So, uh.
I'm just thinking, thinking of cell signal holes, right?
No, I I know, I agree, and so maybe our letter needs to be focused around. The fact that they need to focus on areas with cell service issues. And then we could particularly say that we've received complaints for certain areas, and and certainly if there's anybody listening who has. If they live in an area where landline service is an issue and power outages, please reach out to your local councillor. As we prepare this letter, because we won't be able to send it until we pass it at the regular meeting regardless, so.
Exactly.
We have a couple of weeks to try to gather addresses and areas of concern.
Yep, that makes great sense, okay. So I guess the motion then would just simply be to um, to collaborate with the local MLA on um. Writing a letter of concern regarding the impact of power outages on Bell Infrastructure, especially in areas of low cell signal.
Perfect.
Low to no cells.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's great.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay, could I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Alright, so next on our agenda, uh, I should say thank you councillors, Deputy Warden. Um, we're covering a lot of ground here, I'm looking at the clock, it's nine o'clock, we still have a little ways to go, but we're getting there, so. Thanks for hanging in there, and. Uh, so the next item on our agenda is the CAO regarding the call for applications for the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. So, you, Don.
So as you folks read, um. Uh, provided a briefing note on the uh. On the, on the process to apply for funding, uh, for ICP funding for uh two projects. Uh, both projects are on our 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 uh, our five-year capital plan. Um, he's he's ranked them in priority from uh, obviously. Sewer sewer treatment for uh issues that we've had, we have in Airshad Piddigra and the former landfill closure work. Um, as part of the application process, we're required to have a recommendation uh from council to proceed. For each project, so that's essentially what he's asking for. Um, I guess the other thing, he's recommended that we pr- provide them in that priority. Uh, unless council has any other, any other project that they'd like to see done or. Uh, reverse those roles, it's it's uh, it's all, it's all up to you folks uh to decide. Um, but there is, there is a deadline to to uh, to uh, to apply, I'm just. Not exactly sure what date that is, but I mean, we we have plenty of time to do it now. Yeah, the the, all the preliminary work is done on both of those, um. Uh, we have consulting engineer reports for each. And uh. And of course, that's because they were on our capital plan, and we've been planning and and planning this for quite some time now. Um, so, yeah, so uh what we basically need is a recommendation from uh council. And uh, Chris will proceed with the uh application for the ICIP funding.
Okay, thank you, Don, and and I would just like to say before we jump into this, the discussion on this. Please extend our thanks to Chris and his team with Public Works who would have supported this, because it's really helpful and a really thorough briefing note. Um, so thank, please extend our thanks in that regard, um. Councillors, do you have any uh thoughts, any uh discussion uh you'd like to have on this?
Well, for for me, Madam Morton, I I would agree with the. With the way that it's prioritized for sure, and it's exciting for me to see, uh. You know, so some funding coming down the pipeline for Airshad Water and uh. The the sewer treatment plant for Airshad Piddigra, also, that's that's exciting now for sure, and I, again, uh, yeah, I appreciate. Chris and his staff's work on this and and yourself, Don, so, yeah, I'd like to see it stay uh the way it is prioritized. Uh, I had a few questions, Don, uh, you know, it says that. The policy states that we can only provide one million, uh, which leaves us a shortfall of the two point two million. Uh. And that would, you know, when it comes to a loan, and if, you know, a twenty-year plan, uh, it looks like a twenty-four percent rate increase. To our sewer, uh, to our sewer customers, uh, now that twenty-four percent. Is that a net, Don, is that a total? Or, again, we 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 put some, some numbers in reserve this this year. Uh, and and we've seen some increases go up at five percent in Piddigra and sixteen percent in Airshad. Uh, is that twenty-four percent uh where the total has to be, so are we talking at or nineteen and or eight? Or is that our twenty-four percent over and above where they're at today?
Those are certainly estimates, and and I'm sure the numbers aren't exact, although. Uh, it's still all dependent on how much uh funding we do get, I know that the uh percentage of funding is seventy-three percent. Or I believe seventy-three point three percent, and uh, and of course, the the municipality can only contribute a million dollars, but that's based on. The actual uh, the actual terms of the of the of the of the bylaw. So. Until we get some more so- solid pricing and until we can maybe determine what all these numbers mean. Um, I wouldn't be too sure on that exact number.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, I know I'd be prepared to support that, uh, those recommendations and in the in the priority listed. Um, if if others are in agreement, um, could I get a motion from uh from council to that effect? We need to state, uh, oh, sorry, councillor Sean, we need to state both the um, both the projects and the and the uh. The prioritization, yeah, yeah.
So I'll make that motion, Madam Morton.
Okay, so the motion then is to um accept the recommendation staff. To proceed with an application for ICIP funding for the Airshad Piddigra sewer plant replacement. And the legacy landfill closure work uh in that priority. So, sum it up, okay, so that motion is made by councillor Sean Sampson, seconded by councillor Brent Sampson. And any further discussion?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, so I'm recognizing, I have a little bit of a list uh here, so um, I'll thank you for your patience in advance. Um, and some of these are going to be really quick, um, just kind of wanting to, you know, uh, bring items to your. To uh the discussion at the council table so that we could make some tweaks and maybe uh take some small steps on advocacy with a couple of things as well. The first is uh the internet update, so councillors, you'll recall that, um, I guess would have been a year or more ago, I'm sure. The KF and Partnership had coordinated a meeting with Bell, which is the internet service provider working on the role of. Out for Development of Scotia's broadband expansion project, and it's been quite a long time since we we had that meeting, um. And I I found it a useful opportunity to kind of be able to speak directly to the uh, to the internet service provider, to really. Ask them some pointed questions, um, we are coming into another construction season, I guess, I just wanted to at this stage. Hage interest from council um on the potential of us reaching out to the partnership again to discuss. Uh, having another meeting set up with either Develop or with Bell or both. Um, I'd like to kind of hear your thoughts on that, if you think that this might be some good timing as we. And hopefully come out of winter soon. Yeah, councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, um, I'd be in favor of that, just because I think, uh, you know, a lot of people probably wondering where things are at. Uh, it'd be good for us to see a little bit more information on it, I think also at the time, we kind of asked about if there was areas they knew. That, you know, they were quite certain, certain, some roads that may not end up falling under this, because we really didn't want people sitting there waiting, assuming they were going to get it next year. And then, but, you know, waiting all this time and then finding out at the last minute that, oh, no, your road was never included, or it's not likely to be down there. I don't know that, I don't recall ever getting anything back from them with any kind of information about, so. I I think it would be good to touch base again and and get a bit of an update for for everybody here.
Yeah, I, you're exactly right councillor Sampson, um, and I think what happened with, you know, at that time is that I think we were too early. In in the engineering phase of of the overall project for them to be able to tell us that with any certainty, and I'm hopeful that now we would have. You know, hopefully, they would have that narrowed down to a certain extent, um, you know, so that we could have a better idea of it, because I think those unserved areas. Are where we're going to need to focus some attention, right, so. Um, yeah, thank you councillor Sampson, Deputy Warden.
In the essence of time, I can't imagine anyone's going to say they don't want to do this, so I'm going to make a motion that you reach out to the partnership and ask them to. Coordinate a meeting with either with 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 Align, I think is best, that meeting we had the last time, the. Parties that were involved were the, was the best mixture, um, the project coordinator out of Newfoundland or wherever, whatever his name was, I can't recall, but. That he was super helpful and very knowledgeable.
Yeah, okay, um, so I guess the motion would be for uh for me, the warden, to reach out to KF and Partnership to see if they can coordinate. Someone meeting um with Bell to discuss front.
I'll take that motion.
Thanks councillor Digdon, any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda um is regarding the Richmond Port Hawkesbury Joint Development Commission appointments. Um, so as you'll recall, we did uh appoint both myself and councillor Digdon um to the. The commission right after we were elected, when we get our committee approvals and structure approvals. Um, and of course, the CAO is part of that committee as well, um, the first meeting of the commission was held last month, uh, so it's taken us some time to kind of. Get there, although I I think it's been the first meeting of the commission in many, many years, so I'm kind of excited that things are moving on it. Uh, but the committee currently includes from the town, Mayor Brenda. Uh, councillors Blaine McCory and Mark Maguire, along with their CAO Terry Doyle, and then again, myself, councillor Digdon and Dawn from Richmond. And uh, what that brought to light was that, um, we were, I think, interpreting the act a little bit differently. Um, or sorry, the legislation a little differently, um, the commission, according to the legislation that uh that. Exists to uh provide it with the rules of operation, it um, it requires that. The person who holds the office of the warden for the county, um, and and then also the mayor would both have to be part of the commission. Um, board, um, but then it also, in a later bullet, indicates that two members of the council. Of the, of Richmond County would be appointed by our council. My understanding um is that, you know, it would be two members, one of which would be the warden, because it doesn't. It doesn't clearly say and, uh, it doesn't say that it has to be the warden and two members of council. Um, but we did get, uh, we did get some legal advice on it, because Terry and I weren't really sure. Exactly where that was going to land, um, so the advice we got from Pat Lamy. Um, is that despite the missing and, uh, he does believe that the those bullets were intended to be. Conjunctive, so we can assume the the word and should have been there, um, and it is very, it's very much prescriptive, so. Uh, so even though the word and is missing, um, it he's he's suggesting that it should be inferred. Um, so the legal advice is that we would appoint an additional member of our councillor, of our council to the commission. Um, as our, as a representative there, so that we would be in compliance with the act. Um, so, um, I guess, at this point, this is committee of the whole, I wanted to bring it to your attention now, if there's someone. This, you know, um, who would like to join the commission uh from council. Uh, maybe you can indicate your interest now, or if we want to think about this, but I'm hopeful that by our February twenty-eighth meeting. Um, we will, we will have lined up someone so that we are in compliance. So, any questions from councillors on that? Nobody's jumping up and down right really quickly, I thought there's a lot of committees. Okay.
I I don't, I can't speak for Deputy Warden or councillor Sampson if they want to, to be the one to join on board, but. I I I can look into, uh, I can look at joining you and councillor Digdon.
Okay.
If if that works for the rest of us.
Okay, uh, Deputy Warden, councillor Brent Sampson, did, you know, did you have an interest in that? Or did you, would you be supportive of that? Right, uh, councillor Sampson?
No, I'm fine, if, uh, whatever way you want to go, that that's no problem with me, it's a. I'd love to see it developed, but I don't know that I want to commit the time to it with all the other meetings.
Yeah, for sure, understandable.
I also would support councillor Sampson. Without a P. I would support councillor Sampson with a P too, but. But definitely Sean is interested and willing, I, you know, thanks for that, because, yeah, there there's just a lot of other parts, a lot of moving parts right now, so it's good.
All right, well, then maybe, uh, if that's the case, maybe we can formalize this now, um, put it in a motion now, I guess. Would be to appoint councillor Sean Sampson to the uh. Richmond Port Hawkesbury Joint Development Commission.
Make that motion.
Okay, thanks councillor Sampson, councillor Brent Sampson, uh Deputy Warden. Was that a second?
It is a second, yeah.
Thank you, all right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, and of course, will come into full effect after our uh regular council meeting, so thank you very much. Councillor Sean for um, uh, offering to do that, I think, I think it is an exciting opportunity to maybe look at some. New potential for that region, so.
It is, and I will warn you, if there's any opening, she will volunteer you as a, yeah. The person to.
Sure. Okay, um, all right, so the next item I had on our agenda, this is really just for information purposes, and I know that a number of us. Attended some or or part of the uh recent Richmond Roundtable. But the Early Childhood Development Instrument was something that we discussed, and I requested a follow-up. Uh, I guess chat with Olivia Melnick, who is the regional director for Nova Scotia Early Childhood Development Intervention Services here in the straight area. Um, just to learn a little bit more about the the Early Childhood Development Instrument, they call it the E E D I. Um, it's a questionnaire uh that was developed uh through McMaster University, and it's quite a questionnaire, I I, you know, I think it's quite lengthy. Um, and it gets completed by grade primary teachers in the second half of the school year, and specifically, it measures. Children's ability to meet age-appropriate developmental expectations in five general domains. So there are physical health and wellbeing is one, social confidence is another, emotional maturity. Language and cog- cognitive development, and then the last one is communication skills and general knowledge. So it was interesting to me to know that the EDI has been done in the straight regional center for. So it was interesting to me to note that the E D I has been done in the straight regional and center for education schools approximately every two years, four times in total. And Richmond County unfortunately has the bottom of three of the four cycles so far. And of course, we know that that's gonna have far reaching impacts for our, our children as they grow and develop, and, and I do think understanding that you know, why that's happening is critical to understanding how we should be looking at and maybe even investing in early childhood development. So I wanted to check in with councillors to see if you would have an interest in perhaps inviting Olivia to to provide information to council with information that's more specific to Richmond County, the, the information that she had provided to me. Yeah, she felt it was missing some Richmond County perspective, and so I, I think it would be really great for all of us to see that council is interested. I don't know if she would wanna do that in the form of a presentation, or maybe just through, you know, any, from council, see what, what you think on that, on that matter.
Yes, like whether, whether, like if she would be open to presenting, it would be really great. Because then, you know, it provides more, it provides aid to the public to learn more about it as well. And it also provides us the opportunity to kind of have like an open discourse about it. Because they do think it is important, and it would be interesting to just see her perspective in terms of how, as a council, we could support any of that work. You know, if we have a place there, if she's not comfortable with presentation, even if she provided written information, that would also be helpful, and, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks deputy warden. So I don't know that we need a, a motion to that effect, I could just shoot her a quick email asking her what her interest level would be if, if folks are all okay with that, no one has opposition to that? Okay, great, I'll take the quiet as a, as a go forward. Thank you very much, everyone. Really intrigued to, to hear more about it for myself too, so. Okay, next on our agenda is J class roads, and I pop this as an, an item on our agenda because of the recent news coverage that Inverness County had regarding their plan to borrow to finance paving projects on J class roads. And Dawn and I had a quick chat about this, and he's indicated that we haven't heard back from the list that we submitted, or, or at least he wasn't aware of, of an update from the province. You'll recall that we had submitted several roads for, you know, to get the pricing on paving and doing that, that type of upgrade under, under the cost share program. So, but whereas I saw this item in the news, I guess I'm wondering if council, you know, if, if you'd be interested in having staff do some investigating on if those are, you know, for roads would be, that would have been submitted from this past year or previous years, and also maybe impacts for our financial situation, should we choose to explore the option of borrowing, and I think from camp, you know, deputy warden Sampson's discussion tonight on, you know, places like Langley Road, which is a J class road, you know, this could potentially, you know, be greatly beneficial to the county if we had, if we were able to do so within the financial constraints that we, that we have to operate in, so. Deputy Warden?
So I did smoke, speak to our local M L A this weekend, and speaking about the other roads, and I did ask him about it, because I was also interested to find out, yeah. And he said that it was his understanding that the roads that they were approving were ones that they had priced out the year previous.
Okay.
So that, that, from what he understood, the current year's requests for budgeting had not been finalized yet, but that those were ones that had been identified by Inverness County, well, not this year, but last year. So that might explain, that might explain why Dawn has said we haven't received it, but they've been moving forward with it. So I, I, I don't think it's gonna hurt for us to check in with the provincial department of public works to find out when we could expect to see those back. Because I do think it's something we wanna talk about at budget time in particular. Because we may need to be adding some of those pieces to our capital budget plan, if we decide we wanna move forward, and then I think at that time, it may be appropriate for the C F O to check into, you know, funding options, what all of those look like.
Yeah, okay, thanks deputy warden, councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, maybe I'd ask, I don't know if the C O recalls this, I believe there was a timeframe I thought fairly clearly attached to it, like I thought we were expected to hear back, was officially a nudge as to whether or not there would be approving on these things with costing. I thought when we submitted that, there was, there was a timeframe attached to it, as to when we hear back from the province. Recall that, Dawn?
We can certainly confirm that with, with the folks that we provided the application to. I can get Chris to, to identify what, when the, what dates, we can expect something or nothing, or responds to say whether or not we're going to, successful or not.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great, Dawn, I, I think because I'm trying to figure out the timing of this in my mind, so if, you know, deputy warden, if those were for roads that were submitted in the prior year, then you're, I'm assuming this, this borrowing would only be for the next, you know, for the fiscal year after this, so I'm just trying to figure out the timing of it. But, but definitely, Dawn, if you could check in with, with with those folks, that would be really great, and I don't know if we need a motion to that effect, I know we already discussed this and had, and had agreed that staff should look into it, maybe that covers it. What would be your preference, Dawn? Would, would you need that in a motion, or, or just sort of as follow-up from our existing desire to to get that information from the province?
I'll just follow up with, with Chris, and he'll find out, I'll send an email to you folks.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on that item? All right, so hearing none, I'll move us on to acknowledgements. So there were a couple of things that I wanted to acknowledge this, this meeting. The first is just to say a big congratulations to Lexi Cotton and East Richmond Education Centre teacher Stephanie Bitten on being awarded a three hundred and fifty dollar grant from the Health Promoting Schools Steering Committee. They put forward a proposal just for Christmas to purchase planting items needed to create a more natural environment at their school, and I can't, I really can't wait to see how their efforts are gonna impact their overall school climate, so just kudos to taking on that lovely piece of work. Also wanted to provide a congratulations to Denise Reynolds of Cleveland, and she is Richmond County's Volunteer of the Month for January. Denise is the head of the decorating committee for the Riverdale Community Centre in, in your district deputy warden, and she's with the West Bay Road and District Volunteer Fire Department 's auxiliary. I'm told she's one of the founding members of the Carrick Theatre Group and the Riverdale Community Centre, as well as others, organizes a high tea, which fundraises for a local women's shelter, and so much more. So I just wanna say thanks to Denise for her important work in the community and in the entire county, and as a volunteer of the month, Denise will receive a plaque and a hundred and fifty dollars of gift cards to the local business of her choosing, so please for folks watching this evening, if you know someone deserving, please don't hesitate to nominate them for our Volunteer of the Month award, we accept those applications year round. So councillors, I don't know if you had any other acknowledgements that you might like to make, if so, please chime in, or any questions or discussion on the ones I mentioned?
I do, actually, I have, I have a quick one, and I guess it's, it's rude, because it didn't ask the gentleman's name, and he works for the county. I have to say, the gentleman who cleans the sidewalk in Erie Shad. If he ever stops working for the county, I'm sure Department of Transportation would be more than happy to hire him, because he does a fabulous job up and down from the, you know, the doggy bags at the end to it just, it is, you could almost lick, lick, lick the sidewalk, it's so clean by the time he's done, so to, to the gentleman that works for us, that the county of Richmond that does our sidewalks in Erie Shad, thank you very much for a great job.
Thanks councillor Digdon. I should mention too, I've discussed with Dawn, and I think deputy warden, you and I chatted about this, that for each of our committee of the whole agenda, we'd just like to add acknowledgements as a standing agenda item, so that we can recognize folks like our volunteer of the month, and any other folks in the community who are, who are going above and beyond, and that way, I think it's, I think it's a nice gesture and great way for us to express thanks, so watch for that on future agendas. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, so the next, actually, several items, councillors, I'm more or less thinking would be just for referral to committee. I'll start with the community member committee reimbursements. So after chatting with Dawn today, he mentioned that in the past, 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 the county had a practice of paying a fee based on, I think, meetings attended to committee members for both councillors and the public, and, and that was eliminated when council stipends were increased, is what Dawn had explained to me, and I think probably also around the time that the number of councillors was reduced, and, you know, that, that whole change was taking place. So, in the context of our accessibility advisory committee in particular, this has kind of been brought to my attention, because disabled people, in particular, are chronically underemployed in our society, and, you know, I think if we look at the example that's being set by the provincial employment standard development committee of the province, they are paying based on attending a meeting at something like a hundred dollars for about an estimated three to four hours of work, which is essentially one meeting for them. So, you know, that, just, I guess in thinking about this, it's not large amounts of money that we would be talking about for you know, to provide a small stipend like that, maybe on a per meeting basis for members of the public who who are, you know, volunteering their time for the, you know, for the county. But it would definitely be, I think, meaningful in many cases in terms of helping them offset the costs of their valuable time and effort spent, and really a way to acknowledge that the, you know, the service that our volunteers were helping shape the county and the future of our, of our region, you know, to, to really acknowledge that we appreciate that service, so. I, I don't have anything prepared, because I really, I feel like whatever had existed in the past, probably wouldn't be applicable. And I'm, I guess at this stage, wanting to open it up for discussion from council, to see if they would have an interest in referring this to policy and bylaw, and for staff to do some investigation into maybe some best practices. And any thoughts from councillors on this?
Because I think, you know, a lot of these people, they're offering their time and, and to, to better the county here, and, and they should be reimbursed for this, for having to travel for meetings and so on.
I think that current policy allows for travel, though, am I correct in that, warden?
I believe it allows for travel, but, you know, in the case of a lot of virtual meetings, the, the travel is not occurring, right?
No, no, yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing the idea of paying for meeting either, like, I would, I would agree that we should move it forward and ask staff to investigate best practices, I just, where councillor Sampson had just commented they should be, you know.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I think they, I just wanted him to know that I was pretty sure when I had looked at that policy that we were reimbursing for travel, but this would be a like, just basically a stipend for the meeting, so I've seen that in other organizations as well, and I think it's, I think it's fair.
So if we want to refer this to policy and bylaw, I don't know that we need a motion to do that, we can just simply ask staff, I think, to make a note, I, I always trip up on that, Dawn, can you just advise on procedure on that, maybe that in the form of a motion?
Unnecessary, I mean, we have a, we have a scheduled policy bylaw for Wednesday, so I mean, certainly wouldn't wanna make a motion and recommend to council, because obviously
Yeah.
On that date, so we'll include it on the, on the agenda, or on the list, on the list of.
The list, yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you, Dawn. Okay, so the next two items are more related to land use type of activity, so the first is, this is listed, I will say, as land use filings regarding customer service improvements and definitions of private roads. Just to give you a little background, because I think at the end of the day, it's really about our subdivision bylaw. But after meeting with the constituent district for councillor Sean Sampson and I, so we're both, we both are appointees to the Eastern District Planning Commission. We were made aware of an opportunity to improve our subdivision bylaws that would potentially provide better customer service and clarity. Specifically with regards to the process of right of ways and the definitions of private roads, so you know, one of the examples, I guess, that was provided is that, you know, for landowners who share a right of way, could they be notified by the development officer or the planning commission to be given the opportunity to provide information? You know, if that, if that right of way was kind of leading to a you know, a property that was being applied for a subdivision under that bylaw. If, you know, when issues around you know, requirements being met, or if there is potential legal challenge, what's the level of investigation that should be occurring, and different things like that, so. You know, I've got a kind of a list of examples here, that I guess at the end of the day, you know, I I don't know that we wanna get into too much detail here at council, because I really feel like it's probably a discussion for planning advisory. And so would, you know, would councillors be supportive of maybe having that referred to planning advisory committee for some discussion? And then, you know, I know I'm not a part of that committee, but I'd be happy to attend to provide some of that background information and, and kind of do a written summary for the committee members, so that we could, so that we have something to really review. Councillor Sean, I don't know if you want to mention?
Yeah, Madam Warden, I saw I've been part of these discussions with you, and, and I think that's a great idea on your part, and, and good of you to offer, if you could put a summary together and, and have it ready for the planning, planning advisory committee. Just, just so we're aware of the situation and, and and the steps forward to, to improve those situations. I would, yeah, you're probably best made to speak to John Bain on that, and
Yeah.
Yeah, he may just wanna written summary, or whether or not he'd want a presentation or not, but I think he would know best.
Yeah, I think so, and I, and I should, you know, I should say, I mean, obviously, if we're, you know, any, anything I'd be preparing or, you know, to, to provide to planning advisory committee, I'd be definitely working with John on that, because I don't want to, I don't wanna assume that my interpretation of a, of a, you know, a bylaw is related to land use planning or subdividing, is, I'm no expert in that field, so. Thank you Brent, or councillor Brent for that, though.
I, I, I just think your summary would help the conversation, that's all, right, so I, I think it's.
Yeah. Deputy Warden, or is, is that okay with you? I think, I'm just trying to remember who was on planning advisory committee.
Brent is the chairperson.
Okay.
Planning advisory, right?
Just to, to refer to John Bain on that.
Yeah.
Who's the best to, to do with how, how to move forward on it.
You, you need a motion to I, I don't think, you're just saying.
I don't think so. Yeah, I, I don't think we need a motion to that effect, I think the time for a motion would be maybe if, you know, if planning advisory decides to make a recommendation, change a subdivision bylaw, but at this point, it's just really, I just really wanted to put it on the radar that for information purposes that councillor Sean and I were having those conversations, and then, and then there might be some opportunity for some improvements there. I think the timing could be really good too, with the work that we're doing on, you know, Plan Eastern Nova and Plan Richmond specifically, right? So just thought I'd take advantage of the time, so. Okay, thanks for your advice on that councillor Brent Sampson, and we'll, I'll get on top of that and reach out to John Bain. Okay, the next item on our agenda then is, again, this is written as recreational vehicles bylaw, but I do believe that the issue we're running into is related to the Almeda planning strategy and the land use bylaw that applies specifically to Almeda. And according to the information I have, it's coming down to the definition of an accessory building. And so it's being interpreted, interpreted by our planning staff to include an R V, I believe, as a, as a definition of an accessory building, and the current restrictions, as I understand it, is that there is only one of these allowed per property in the Almeda planning area. So, you know, in discussing with John Bain early on on this matter, you know, he, he and I were talking about it, and hi- his interpretation of that, and and, you know, he indicated that, you know, the, the, like, there are, there are locations in the county specifically around the Grand Lake area, which is an area that I asked him about specifically, because I did receive a complaint about it. And it looks like the, the bylaw is not being enforced in that area, because there's more than one R V per one specific property. However, you know, I mean, we discussed that with him, and then receiving several letters from residents, and I wanna thank everybody who wrote in, I have to tell you, that makes a really big difference, and it gives us more information to work with, so thanks to everybody who wrote letters. You know, maybe we need to look at modernizing some of those restrictions for the Almeda. But maybe we need to look at modernizing some of those restrictions um for the Almeda uh planning area. With regards to that specifically. Um, so, you know, at, at the end of the day, our. Planning commission staff is obligated to enforce the bylaws we have in place now. We can't just choose to ignore them. Um, so I fully support them in that. Uh. Um, but I did also, I, you know, I think it's high, it's more past time maybe for us to have a discussion on modernizing. But, you know, understanding that everything is a balance kind of between protecting our environment. Being fair to commercial camp campground owners or potential owners as well as preserving the quality of life of our residents. Want to be able to gather campfires and. And uh do the things that people love to do here in Richmond County, so it is a balancing act. Um. Councillor Brent Sampson, uh, before I take your, ask for your comment, um, I just want to note. That uh the deputy warden has removed herself from the discussion due to a conflict. Um, so councillor Sampson, did you have comment?
Yeah, so no, I actually heard from several residents as well, but but looking into this, it's um just to make it clear for me. It's, it's not exactly a county bylaw. This has to do with the zoning issues and so on, so we're kind of. To be honest, we're sort of putting the cart before the horse here tonight. It's again. Um, I think the correct way to go about that would just be to speak to John Bane and and he can put it on the PAC. Uh, agenda and then we'll move from there. It'll have to come back to council, so instead of sort of going backwards like this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going backwards. I feel like we received enough um, um, letters from the public about uh the bylaws being enforced. I think I felt pretty obligated to put it on. The council agenda. Um, but at the end of the day, if you're supportive, uh councillor Brent Sampson, we could refer this down to P, what planning advisory. Through John Bane and 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 follow that track because I think you're exactly right in the sense that. That's where the discussion needs to happen if there's going to be changes to zoning or. Or municipal planning strategy or municipal planning areas. Does that sound like a good path forward?
Yeah, I, I, I think, Brent, it is a land use bylaw and and it is an Almeda. But uh the bylaw is going to affect everybody in Richmond County, even though it's just a land use bylaw in Almeda because we're talking about Grand Lake here. But when you're talking about dwellings. Uh, you're not talking about RVs or campers. It's, it says that the, the definition of a dwelling is, is not. A hotel or motel or a travel trailer, right? So one dwelling per lot, one RV per lot. Would that? That, you know, in the future, to me, in my opinion, i- i- it's going to have to be discussed and amended. Uh, so I think it'll affect everybody in Richmond County, to be honest, right? And I think where we're going wrong here. Is the definition of a, of a, of a campground. Right? So for me, uh, during the campaign, if anybody were to follow my campaign, I talked about the Akating campsite. And the fact that we've never replaced the Akating campsite for thirty five years, right? There's not a campground on Almeda. Uh, and uh we want to encourage. Campgrounds on Almeda and we will, you know, our goal is to get a campground on Almeda. Uh, but our goal is not to. Uh, take uh the people uh that have travel trailers here on Almeda and let them leave the island. Uh, our goal is to attract people and tourists to come to Almeda, so. I think what's going on here is. Like uh Madam Morden alluded to, we've had many letters. Uh, of concern that. Some, some of these RVs and and travel trailers are. You know, just family and friends gathering on private property. Uh, for the summer, campfires. You know, get togethers, family and friends. And uh, you know, this is not for the entire summer. These people are, are on Grand Lake and then. Uh, they, they go away to other campgrounds during the summer. But I think uh when you're, when you're deciding that. One campground per private property or one RV. Uh, yeah, we gotta, we gotta have a discussion there to, to, to look at amending that stuff, right? And and what, what constitutes an RV? A recreational vehicle? Is it a boat? Is it a pontoon boat? Is it a seadoo? Is it a speedboat? Is it a four wheeler? You know, like, those are discussions you gotta have, right? You know, so uh when you're talking about one camper on one piece of property. Yeah, that's uh, that's tough and 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 listening to all these concerns. Um, I think a lot of people would agree as well, right, that we have to look at this.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, no, and and I heard from people as well, and I know that uh that zoning doesn't apply here, but I know, you know, we're obviously Plan Richmond is looking at zoning. And I encourage people to reach out to Plan Richmond to, you know, express their concerns that they don't want to see the same thing. You know, instituted. However, again, this is all sort of a. Waste of discussion at this point because it's got to go to PAC first and then refer back to council, so. Um. We, we can pretend something's going to happen tonight, but other than just referring this to PAC, which doesn't even have to go through this meeting, I mean. It's just been brought up to them. Um, I think we're kind of just. Wasting time here discussing it at this point because there's a process to go through and I'd like to see it dealt with as well because I. I, I. Yeah, I, I, I honestly. I, I have concerns with it as well, but again, this isn't the place, that's what the planning advisory committee and it's a public committee and. They're able to show up to that, so. In other words, I have nothing else to say because I think we're just wasting our time here tonight.
Oh, no, and and that's okay, and that's okay, Brent, uh, you know, yeah, for sure, we, we got to refer to PAC and whatever. Uh, but I think we owe it, uh, I think we owe it to the. Uh, twenty three participants, so minus us. I think we owe it to the, the nine or ten or eleven participants that's been here for. Two hours and thirty nine minutes to have some kind of preliminary discussion on it, right? That, that's why they're here. And that's why they're on this call, right? So I just wanted to have a preliminary discussion uh on that situation.
Thanks, councillors. Uh, councillor Nathan.
Yeah, I, I guess, uh, you know, I'm kind of caught in between both, uh, you know, on, on Brent's side, he's right, just got to go through a PAC first. However, uh, kind of like coun- kind of like councillor Sean Sampson and yourself, I feel that, uh, you know, when it's brought to our attention, it definitely got to be addressed, whether it goes through the PAC. First or whether it goes through us, we're their, we're their line of contact and uh. You know, if we sit back and wait for somebody else to make the move, then. Uh, at that point, it may be too late for some of these people and. And obviously, uh, they put us in here to do a job and whether the outcome is what they're going to want or not want, then uh, you know, so be it, but. Yeah, I guess, uh, you know, PAC is a. Is where we're going to have to go with it and uh, again, like councillor Sean said, I, I think um. I think some of these bylaws have been written for a long time, definitely have to be looked at and. You know, adjusted or changed and uh. How we do that, well, it might be a consultation with some of the listeners that are on here now and uh. You know, and so be it, but again, we'll uh send it off to Mr. Bane and. He can direct us in what he feels is their next step.
Yeah, uh, thanks councillor Digden, and I, you know, just not to be uh orally disagreeable, uh councillor Brent Sampson, but I don't think it's ever a waste of time for us to let. The public know that we're uh. You're responding to their concerns and, but I do agree with you a hundred percent that, that there's a process, so let's. Let's follow that process and, yeah.
I, I don't want them having the impression we're going to do something about it tonight just because it's the incorrect process, so. I, I don't want to fool anybody sitting here waiting two and a half hours to find out that. They more or less wasted their time because we can refer it to PAC and I, I want to see it dealt with as much as anybody. I just. I don't want to make believe for people on here that uh we're going to make a big show tonight and. The process was.
There's no big show, councillor Sampson. It's just simply uh open for discussion so that we can let the public know that we're taking this seriously and uh. And it will be dealt with uh through, through the proper channels, so. All right, well, thanks everyone for your comments on that. Um, and uh I'm sure uh we'll, we'll, we'll all be looking forward to the next planning advisory committee meeting and. Uh, to see, you know, to see what the next steps are, so. Um, okay, uh, so the next item on our agenda uh is correspondence and this one specifically, the first piece of correspondence is uh. Is noted as action required. Um, so it's from Autism Nova Scotia, our straight area chapter, and it just indicates that they are suggesting a flag raising ceremony on April fourth, twenty twenty two. Um, there's additional information, uh, background information on Autism Nova Scotia in general. Um, specifically uh for our, for the straight area chapter. Um, they're, they're looking for us to raise the flag for Autism Acceptance Month on April fourth, twenty twenty two. They are simply asking that someone from the county office take a picture of the flag once it's raised. Or a video of the flag raising, so we can share it virtually on our face page and website. And they will provide the county with the flag prior to the day. Um, and they're suggesting it'd be great if the, if the flag could be raised by uh myself or a county official. So I'm just looking for uh opinion from council on um. On your thoughts on doing a flag raising for autism uh on April fourth.
Looking for a motion, I'll make the motion, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, councillor Sean Sampson. Uh, the motion's made to do a flag raising on April fourth for autism. Uh, could I have a second around that?
I'll second that.
Thanks, deputy Warden. For the discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, thanks, everyone. Um, so, Don, I'm assuming, um. I, I think that letter might have been sent to me, but I think I forwarded to you guys for the, for the information package, so I'm assuming one of you would follow up with Natalie. On that, Natalie Stevens?
The, the autism, right?
For the flag raising, yeah.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ivan.
There. Is there a. Any idea how long that's going to fly for? Is that a day or is that a week or?
She indicated a day, I think, uh. You know, I, I think they're, they were more interested. I, and when I first um got, you know, was contacted by her, I thought she meant for the month, but um. But she, her request was only to do the flag raising, so I think for the day would be, would be fine. Or whatever makes sense, you know, from municipal operations. I think we could use our judgment on that. Okay? All right, um. The next piece of correspondence is a thank you note from Olivia. Uh, Burns, who is a Richmond count, uh Richmond Education Center and Academy grad. For twenty twenty one, and it's a thank you note for the generous versary of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Which she will put towards her education at Santa Fe University, pursuing a bachelor of science in hu- human kinetics, can, human kinetics. Um, so thank you, Olivia, for your note and um we'd be glad that we're continuing to support. Um, youth in our community in that way. And the next item on our agenda is a note from Saint Martha's uh Hospital Foundation. And it is, uh, it's a thank you note for the contribution of seventy five hundred dollars, which we had allocated to them, I believe, a budget time. Um, and it continues by describing their mission to ensure that the highest standard of healthcare is available for patients. At the hospital. Um, and the investment uh in new and innovative medical technology can help save lives. That donation is going to assist. Uh, Saint Martha's and healthcare teams as they continue to offer heart quality service, so. Thanks to them for their um, for their letter. It was sent by Sarah McDonald, the executive director, and Megan McGilvood, case the foundation chair. The next item of correspondence on our agenda is regarding an ocean farming series, Ocean Farming one O one. Uh, is starting up on uh February seventeenth. Um, it's a, it's a Zoom webinar that runs between one PM and two PM, and I know has been of particular interest. To folks in your district, councillor Brent Sampson, um. Uh, you know, in terms of future opportunities for economic development. Um, the speaker is Dana Morris, who is uh extension associate within Maine Sea Grant College of Program. The Maine Sea Grant College Program and the University of Maine uh Corporate Education, so. Uh, Dane is widely known as an expert in this field. I can tell you, I've been. You know, with my college hat on, very deeply involved in the planning of, of this, of this series and looking forward to it. That would be February seventeenth, when it's the first in the series of five. Webinars that would be hosted. Um, will include lot, lots of local content as well, so. I would just suggest to council to stay tuned to into that one if you can. Um, and I think, uh, I think the correspondence that Don, that, that Don and Ivan sent to us. Um, actually, it doesn't include a registration link, so I may just follow up with everyone, um, in case you're interested in joining, so.
Yes, it's on the K-Britten Partnership website if you just search ocean firm series because it, and it's just at the bottom of the link, I just looked it up.
Great, awesome, thanks, deputy Warden. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the review of checks issued January twenty twenty two. Those checks were uh circulated in advance. Uh, are there any questions from council on their, on the checks issued?
Uh, Madam Morton, I don't have any from uh this month, but uh the last few months I did as the CEO. Uh, about uh a breakdown of our. Our internet and, and uh phone and uh bell mobility providers and and stuff like that, so. He did provide me with, was answered, uh, so thank you for that, CEO. I just had a, a question on the bell mobility part of it. Uh, there was a breakdown for that seven hundred and eighteen dollar check. And that breakdown included. I'm going to say nine or ten, maybe eleven different cell phones. And, and every breakdown was different. Amounts, it went from. Nine dollars to as high as fifty dollars or so approximately. So my question, and, and a question that one of my residents had was, are those cell phones, public phones, or are they personal phones?
County phones?
They're all public phones?
They're all county phones, yeah.
Okay. So, Don, I mean, a question that I would have as a councillor. And the public had. If they're all county phones and they're. Public phones and are paid for by the public, uh, wouldn't they? Be made public in the reflection magazine? Shouldn't they be public knowledge?
Like on the, on the staff directory and like.
Right, right, exactly, yeah. The only, the only public staff directory phone we have for a cell phone. Is uh Cecil Frost, which is our animal control. Uh, and Harry Martel, but Harry Martel, that's, I think, Eastern District Planning Commission. Cell phone, it has to do with our county, but. Uh, yeah, so just.
So. So put it simply is that uh the phones are there for contact from officials of the county. It's, they're not there for the public to contact the employees directly.
Okay. All right, I need.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, um, Don, I don't know, uh, you may not have thought of this, but um, I think most people, when they're away from their desk, they forward their landlines to the cell phones. So that they can be available all the time, you know what I mean? Um, so are they not showing on the website, you guys? Because um. I'm, I can check real quick, but I thought they were there.
This office, the office numbers are the direct lines to their offices there, yeah, but no cell phones, no.
All right.
They're all, they're all two, two, six, zero, three, nine, three, or zero, three, nine, four. They're all two, two, six numbers.
Okay.
There's no, there's no cell phone.
I think it's on the internal directory then that uh, that's where everybody's cell phones are, okay? I mean, that's up to. Yeah, Don, or you guys, if you want to add it, it can be done.
Yeah. Depending who those are, though, I don't think we want. You know, residents contacting public works on Sunday morning to complain about something or whatever, like, I think there's more than good reason why those numbers wouldn't be published. That's why they have us to contact, right?
I, I would agree, my own, my only, I guess my only statement to that, Brent, would be that if uh. And, and again, you know, I'm going to use the fire at the uh. At the landfill site, um. There was no number for anybody to contact and uh. You know, it actually come, went to me and then I went to Chris. And at that time, but the fire was burning for over half an hour before. If these, if these numbers were public numbers, then somebody might have been able to get a hold of somebody a lot quicker.
Okay, um, so I think probably some pros and cons to that. Maybe we could just um. And think about going forward, what, what would or wouldn't make sense to publish in terms of cell phone. Numbers on, on the website, and I, I think if many of the staff are forwarding to their cell phones anyways, then that's. You know, that's achieving part of the purpose that I think that you're trying to get to councillor Sampson, um.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, if, if the, the office number is there and, and the, the office number is forwarded to their, to their cell phone and they're all at the office, then of course their cell phone would. Would, would pick that up, yeah.
Okay, um. You know, I think if there are specific ones that we feel probably, you know, should be uh published in a, for emergency cert purposes, or maybe some, you know, more. Um, clear. Understanding of who to, who to report an emergency to, um, then, you know, we can certainly address that. Um, but I think probably we'll leave it there for now for, for council for this evening unless anybody has any. Kind of final thoughts on that.
Uh, I guess my own, my only final thought and that, that would be probably a question or an answer for Don, and he doesn't, I doesn't have to do it tonight, I just. I would wonder why we would have so many phones out there at uh. With this day and age, everybody has their own phone and if it's, if it's during work hours, then uh, I would think we would have a better system to get a hold of the employees without. Having to buy it, to provide them with a cell phone. Uh, at, you know, eight, nine hundred dollars a pop, and, and again. That's only, uh, you know, I don't know if that's. that's only, you know, I don't know if that's a statement or a question, but maybe Don can, you know, I understand where we would have our, maybe our directors of of each whatever, but anybody anybody lower than that or anybody that works under the directors, I don't know why we would have to provide them with a cell phone unless it's an on-call basis. And in that sense, then I don't know, I wouldn't have this one cell phone that whoever's on-call that we can pick up and take it.
Well, you know, one example I could think of, Counselor, would be, you know, our recreation staff, right? I mean, if they're out doing registrations for a program, you know, and and somebody's trying to find out something about the program, you know, I just I can see why why they would need to have cell phones, I guess, pretty clearly. And I guess from Public Works, I'm thinking maybe even just more on the safety side. But I I don't know, I won't pretend to know what the reasons are or how, Dawn, you decide who should have one and who shouldn't. But but I do think we need to remember that we, you know, we do live in a very mobile society and and if we're we're looking for our employees to kind of give, you know, a full their full effort, we need to give them the tools that allow them to do so. So, you know, I guess I would just kind of caution it with that, you know, but but at the same time, recognizing, of course, you know, communications costs can be really high really quick, you know. Dawn, I don't know if you have any final comments you want to make. I see you're off.
Yeah. Actually, I do. Actually, I have one just final comment. You folks, you guys decide what the budget's gonna be, and we decide how we're gonna spend it. So we decide that we're gonna spend it on phones, so we can have contact with our employees because of emergency, because of whatever, for whatever reason, we need them. So we provide them with cell phones and there's just, it's unheard of that we would expect them to use their personal phone for anything related to business. So that's why they get a county phone. I mean, some of these public works folks are working in extreme conditions, and we'd not expect them to use their own phone, when in fact they use their phone and it falls in a mud hole. What do we do? Do we reimburse them their phone? We we provide them with a phone and have a plan, check prices, get the best price for for what we need the phones for. And we just go from there. So it's the price it's the price that it's the price you have to pay to communicate with your employees when there's an emergency.
So 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 Dawn, why? Why the different fluctuation of numbers? Why is one $9, one's $23, one's $42? Shouldn't it all be the same package? Or like, is that a percentage of their phone bill or?
Yeah, it's slightly the plan and how it's structured. But what what you can do is send me an email and I can find out, like, if there are some specific comparisons you want me to make with some of the phones, just let me know which ones they are, and I'll let you know what the what the reasoning is for them.
Okay. And maybe we'll leave it with you as well, Dawn, to kind of think about, you know, if there are any of those cells that the county pays for that should be published on the website, you know. We'll leave that with you. It's probably just not something that has kind of come up, especially if the practice has been to forward cells. So. Is that, will that cover that topic, Counselor?
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure, Madam Morton. And again, Dawn, I'm not insinuating at all that that we take away everybody's county phone and then expect them to use their own personal phone for county work, that that was never my suggestion. I'm just trying to better understand, like, the different fluctuations of the the amounts of, you know, the different, you know, numbers, right? $9, $23, $42. You know, is there a better way to have a a plan for all of them that's cheaper, you know? And this is what it is. Yeah, I'm just, you know, just asking questions. That's all.
Yeah. All right, perfect. Thanks, everyone. Any other questions on the review of checks? Okay, and the next is the review of action items from January 10th. Maybe the whole meeting, and I'm seeing a languishing one on there, Dawn, as we sit in. You and I need to connect on connecting with Cecil and talking about the the reporting kind of guidelines for storms when they're coming through. So I'll shoot you an email in about about 30 seconds after. We'll make a plan to connect on that. I think everything else on the list was marked as complete. So if counselors don't have any questions, we'll move on. Okay, and so the next item then are items added. And so this would be the grant request for the River Boisois Mariners. And, oh, my gosh, and look at the time. All right. So Jason has provided a memo outlining the grant request from the Mariners Society. He's indicated that the application is complete, ready to be addressed by council. And they are seeking an investment of $5,000. And I believe it is towards work, repair work that they're doing on, or I think, sorry, repairs to the River Boisois docks and the purchasing of six heavy duty shelving units for the building. So counselors, any discussion on this? And, you know, this is certainly a project I'd be prepared to support as well. Any thoughts or concerns on this particular application?
For me, when you hear the word mariner, you know, I mean, yeah, we're surrounded by a marine industry, right? So when you hear the word mariner, it's hard not to support it, in my opinion, right? So.
Are we willing to make that motion to go ahead with the grant application?
Okay. And so just in terms of allocation, you know, we do have the district kind of funds with folks being like interested in. So if we did 500 from District Four and then maybe 4,500 from the regional budget? Okay. Prepared for that motion, Counselor Brent Sampson, that would be okay? Okay, great. Thank you. Could I have a second around that? Okay, I think I think Counselor Diggin won the race on that one. Everybody's anxious, it's getting close to 10. All right, any further discussion? Okay. So, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So thank you to Sherry Backerdax and her team for getting that information so well put together for us. And I'm sure the CFO will be in touch. Okay, so next on our agenda is the 15-minute question period. And so I just wanted to provide some extra clarity around question periods for for our virtual meetings. There's a I see the thank you in the chat from Sherry. So absolutely. I hope the project goes well, Sherry. So the 15-minute question period, there's a couple of different ways you can call in. There's a phone number you can call into. 438-809-7799. And the meeting ID is 864-7155-6191. Or you can raise your hand here in the virtual meeting or type in the chat that you have a question. So those are kind of three different ways that you can that you can participate in the 15-minute question period. So, okay, I see a hand up from Tina Kinslow. So Tina, you 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 are the first person, I think, we've had ask a question at question period in quite some time. So so thanks for your question. You can go ahead.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys. It's the first time I've attended a council meeting, and you guys are doing a wonderful job. I have a question, of course, regarding the RVs. I do understand that there's a process that has to, that, you know, and I agree with you that you should go through John Bain and follow the process. But I'm in a situation where time is of the essence. And I'm just wondering, as this is unfolding, do I kind of get to wait on the sideline until this is kind of taken care of? Or do I have to follow these time constraints that I'm finding myself in?
Okay, thanks, Tina. Yeah. So I was it, I think you guys have 90 days, right? The last time I chatted with Brent, I think that was the.
Yes, and I'm not sure, I'm not like, as I looked back, I'm not sure if it's 90 days from when we got the email or if we're getting a registered letter. And it's from then. So I'm not, I just know there's gonna be a time period.
Yeah. So typically, I mean, it hasn't really been the practice of of, you know, council through the planning commission to enforce an order that we know is in the process of being discussed for change. Because we were wanting to, you know, everybody's wanting to operate in good faith. But at the end of the day, there is, there are rules in place. So I think that's probably something, you know, maybe to work with directly with John Bain on. And I don't know, maybe, I don't want to put you on the spot, Counselor Brent Sampson, but if you have a sense of when the planning advisory committee might meet.
I would say, I mean, as soon as John is available, I mean, you know, we'll make time, you know what I mean? I think people want to move on this as soon as possible. That would be my sense. So, I mean, there isn't a date set yet, but, you know, I know I'm available as soon as possible. And I'm sure the other counselors on that committee would be as well, because I know it's of great concern. I received contact from a handful of residents here as well, even though, you know, that that doesn't apply to what's here, because the zoning isn't in place at this time. You know, I asked them to reach out to Plan Richmond, as I said, to, you know, to voice their concerns over this. So the same kind of thing didn't happen. But yeah, I would think as soon as possible.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it may depend on John's schedule, because I know I can understand the level of importance. And I'm, you know, be willing to make time in an evening as soon as soon as Mr. Bain can accommodate us.
Our our practice has been for PAC meetings, Brent and Amanda, that they happen on the first Tuesday of every month. So if if there's if there's business, if there's any business to deal with, it's always on the first Tuesday. So that would be on March 1st.
So so Tina, I know that doesn't give you a definitive answer. And, you know, I just, I can tell you that that just has been from past practice that, you know, if we know something is in the process of changing, then certainly, you know, I think the practice has been to relax orders. But I think we should verify that with John, because I feel like I feel like we, you know, the best, the best we could be doing right now, and certainly for for you guys, is to continue like constant communication with him so that you're always aware of what's happening and what the next steps are. And just to make sure that, you know, we're all in the loop on that. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, no, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your question. Any other questions from council or from the public? I see a hand up on Matthew's iPhone. So Matthew, I'm just gonna ask you to tell us your name before you get started with your question.
Hi, it's Matthew Landry from Maryshot.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I just have a question regarding the zoning on the Grand Lake as well. So I me and my family, we recently purchased actually three rather large lots of land around the Grand Lake. And after reading the the bylaws of what I thought were the bylaws for Richmond County, I cannot find any information on which bylaw is actually being broken by the King's Loas or any other piece of land that has RVs on it. And I asked my counselor to provide me with the the byline question that was being broken, and no one seems to be able to provide that to me. Is there a way to search that online or get my hands on that bylaw?
Yeah, for sure, Matthew. I see Counselor Brent has his hand up. But did you want to address that question?
Yeah, I can feel this, because I looked into that myself, because I didn't see it. It isn't a county bylaw as much as it's part of the zoning requirements. And that's why it'll end up having to go through the planning advisory, because it's an Eastern District Planning Commission issue. So for that reason, you wouldn't find it on the county's bylaws, because it's not actually something that municipal counselors, just on their own, came up with. It's part of the zoning requirements. And that's why the confusion there.
Okay, so so can can I be provided with with that information as well?
Yeah, if you were to contact DDPC, they should be able to provide that no problem, I would say. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
You're welcome. Counselor Diggin?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on on Matthew's and maybe give them, if they actually go underneath the County of Richmond website, and they go to our bylaws and they just punch in under the search for documents, if they punch in land, it will bring up the Eastern District Planning bylaws.
Yeah, I think I read them inside out, but I still can't find the part that we're actually in.
Right. Yeah. So if you if you actually go down to the Almedam Section Land Use Bylaw, it, I believe it's page 31, Matthew. And it doesn't, it doesn't specifically say RV, but what it does say is one.
What it does say is one dwelling per lot. And then the second section says that an RV is not considered a dwelling. So I'm just a bit confused.
Yeah, I think it is kind of boiling down to the zoning and what's allowed within those zones. So.
Right, yeah.
Definitely.
And when and when Matthew says that that his counselor couldn't answer him, I couldn't find it as well, because like I went to the Eastern, I went to the Eastern District Planning Commission, and I went to these bylaws, and I read them true and true. And and a dwelling doesn't a dwelling doesn't, you know, constitute a RV or a travel trailer or anything like that. So I was trying to find something that pinpointed what they were breaking, right? So. Yeah, so I agree with his question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So so there's a, in my opinion, there's an issue with, you know, having a 90-day timeframe for the King's Loas to move campers when there's no clear definition of a bylaw. That's actually, you know, that's absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah, and I know, I see your point, Matthew. And but I do, like, I do want to just point back to Counselor Brent Sampson's point, is that because of the, because of how Almedam is zoned, it's the type of zone that exists around Grand Lake is what is causing the problem. And so so that's what's gonna need to be changed. So it's not, that's again, why it's gonna go through planning advisory. So I I think it's, you're not gonna see it clearly articulated and clearly stated in the bylaw as such. But definitely give John Bain a call. And Ivan has put his phone number in the chat, 625-5364. And he'll be able to provide you with that, based on the zoning type in that area, what he'll be able to provide you with that information.
Good.
Okay, thanks for your question. All right. So any other questions? Okay, well, then I will look for a motion to move us in camera.